So we're just missing Martin. I haven't heard where he's at.
We're at six twenty-nine right now.
I'm working.
Okay, Mayor, we are live on YouTube, so ready when you are.
All right, great. All right, and it's six thirty PM right now, so welcome everybody to the Federal Way City Council meeting for October sixth of two thousand and twenty. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, we're getting it.
Yeah, it actually would have been better if we all speak with you.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, I think what happens is when I slow down, then that causes confusion. I just need to just, um, yeah, I just need to do it.
Go with it.
Yeah, exactly. I think that's what's causing the, you know, because I want to be polite and wait, but that waiting is actually causing that, that weird dynamic. Okay. Okay. Way too much analysis. Um, okay. Well, welcome everybody to the Federal Way City Council meeting. I should have a good meeting tonight. Looking forward to it. We, for those joining us at home and online. Um, we had budget sessions, which started earlier today at five o'clock, and we had presentations from the mayor's office, from economic development and our lodging tax advisory committee, as well as our city council president gave the budget presentation for the city council. Um, okay, and now we are on for, um, item A under Presentations, Proclamation for Affordable Housing Week. And we've got Councilmember Asaphadossen, which will start us off.
Mayor, can we do the other one while I get the paper, please?
Absolutely. Yes, let's move to item B, and it's Proclamation of Down Syndrome Awareness Month for October twenty twenty. Council President Honda.
I'm just talking to myself here. Um, can I ask Stephanie if, um, are?
She is.
She is? Okay.
She's on, yeah.
And I've allowed her to talk, and she is not currently muted.
Okay, so I will read the proclamation and, um, uh, Proclamation for Down Syndrome Month, whereas approximately one in every seven hundred children are born with Down Syndrome, representing an estimated six thousand births per year in the United States. And whereas there are over two hundred and fifty thousand individuals living with Down Syndrome in the United States. And whereas, while research and early intervention have resulted in dramatic improvements in the lifespan and potential of those who are affected, more investigation is needed into the causes and treatment of Down Syndrome. And whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of our communities. And whereas individuals with Down Syndrome should have equal opportunity to achieve the universally desired goals of self-fulfillment, pride in their achievements, inclusion in their community, and reaching their fullest potential. Now therefore, we the undersigned mayor and city council of the City of Federal Way do proclaim the month of October twenty twenty is Down Syndrome Awareness Month, and we encourage our citizens to work together to promote respect and inclusion of individuals with Down Syndrome and to celebrate their accomplishments and contributions. Signed this day, October sixth, two thousand and twenty. So I would like to welcome, um, you have probably seen Andrea and her cute little daughter Ariana. Is that, I hope I said that right, on Facebook, if you're on Facebook, and Andrea is a, um, a very involved mom who wants the best for her children and, uh, is going to talk to us about Down Syndrome and what we can do as a community to support those with Down Syndrome. Andrea, do you want to talk?
Hi, thank you, Susan. Uh, thank you for inviting us, and Ariana says thank you too. Um, we are super honored that proclamation was made today and that we could be present, and, um, we're just super excited about the support and, um, and community backing our daughter Ariana, as we want the community and the world to know that she's pretty amazing. Uh, Down Syndrome does not stop her from uh, achieving all of her goals, and, um, you know, we just want the world, we want people to see that individuals with Down Syndrome aren't, are limitless, as long as they have people backing them and supporting them and helping them be the best that they can be within the community, and, uh, yeah, we're pretty, we're honored, like I said, and we're thankful for the community that's showing our daughter support. And we'll continue doing what we're doing because we love bringing, uh, joy to other people.
Andrea, do you want to talk about the book that you wrote and what you're doing this month?
Um, so this month, we are, um, every day of October, we are placing love signs, and it's actual, the word love is blue and yellow with a butterfly on it, um, because we call her our butterfly, but we are placing them in random places throughout our community for somebody to find, and within a little, uh, bag connected to that sign, there's some information about Down Syndrome. There's a picture of Ariana and a request that people find other ways of using the, or instead of using the word retarded, um, because we really love the community and the world to see different ways of using other words in place of that, uh, because it is, it's a word that is hard for us families of loved ones with developmental differences, uh, to hear, and we really would like, um, people who find those signs to consider stopping using that word, and, um, so we place these signs every day. Ariana takes a picture. We post it for people to know. Um, and then Ariana has a book. We published it on March twenty-first of two thousand and twenty, which is World Down Syndrome Day, and it's titled, I Am Ariana. Um, it's a children's book that is aimed to uh, show people that Ariana is more alike than different. She has ten fingers, ten toes, loves to pop bubbles, play with her dolls, and, um, it's real live pictures, so anybody who picks up that book will see who Ariana is and her personality, because boy does she, she shows it in the book, but, um, it's available on Amazon, but people can also contact us and get a copy of that book signed by Ariana if they so desire.
And I'm going to get one for the council offices, and Ariana's going to sign it for us, and I'll do that this week sometime when I make contact with Andrea to do that. Thank you so much for being here. Uh, we really appreciate it, and I found one of your signs at City Hall, I think last year. I was really, I was just, um, so pleased to have it, and I have it here in my office at home, and, um, anyway, thank you very, very much for what you're doing.
Council, Council President, I'd like to share a story with Andrea before she leaves, if that's all right?
Sure.
So, and when I was in the legislature, uh, a young man from the developmental disabilities community came to me and asked if I would pass a bill to help Down Syndrome folks, because he had Down Syndrome, and he was so thankful that his mother did not abort him, uh, and he wanted to do something, um, to say thanks. So the bill I had passed, and it was actually signed and went into law, was, uh, to put information into pediatricians' offices, obstetricians' offices that would explain, uh, what the syndrome was, and, um, because generally, when a woman finds out that she's got a child with developmental disabilities, they've uh, through amniocentesis, they immediately go think of abortion, and so what this information did, and it was in different languages, would explain what's going on, and I've had people stop me to say how many children that that lives have saved. And, uh, children with Down Syndrome are so sweet. You're, you are very, very, you are a special mother to be, heck, to be the mother of a special child. Thank you.
Well, thank you for doing that. That's amazing. We agree. Everybody says we're blessed, but, or that Ariana is blessed to be in our family, but we truly are blessed to have her. Um, she has changed our life in so many ways, and, um, I agree. People need to hear that there's positive news and not just immediately told abort, um, and that's part of why we do this. We want to show other people that, you know, she's, she's an amazing little girl. She just happens to have an extra chromosome, which she rocks to its fullest, by the way, and, um, you know, her joy has changed our world, so I appreciate your being willing to, uh, work with that young man. Do you, was he here in Washington?
Yes, yes, he was, yes.
Alrighty, we're working on getting Ariana comfortable. We're advocating now for her as a child, but our goal is for her to advocate for herself as she grows older, um, and I, I expect great things from her. We'll see, we'll see.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you. I look forward to seeing the book as well. Uh, yes.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, that's it's me, Martin. Okay. Uh, Andrea, thank you so much for, for joining us. Um, I actually just, um, Andrea and I just crossed paths, um, not too long ago, uh, and she had shared with me that she'd be in attendance, and I was pleased to hear, uh, that this proclamation would be taking, uh, place. So Council President Honda, thank you for, for doing this. I think it's so important, you know, um, clearly Andrea, uh, you're, I hope you're hearing that, uh, this truly is a community for all uh, people, uh, because we cherish all human beings, no matter what your background is, uh, we're going to respect and cherish you for who you are and how special you are, and so, uh, I appreciate Councilor Coach Mars, almost sort of Representative Coach Mars, but Councilor Coach Mars uh, comments, uh, you know, uh, I believe she's talking about the Ark of King County. They are really huge into advocating in Olympia, um, and, uh, the, the work they do is just completely invaluable. Uh, and so, of course, I appreciate, uh, her efforts in, in passing, uh, the bill, uh, that, that took place, and so uh, keep doing what you're doing, Andrea, and, and to your daughter, uh, you know, keep, keep rocking on that chromosome. I like, I loved how you said that. It's so, so incredibly special, and, uh, we just appreciate you joining us tonight at the council meeting. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Can you say thank you? Say thank you.
You're welcome. That's cute.
Adorable. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's precious. Okay. Um, okay, uh, now we go back to item A, Proclamation for Affordable Housing Week. Councilmember Asaphadossen.
Um, sorry, Mayor, I'm still having technical difficulties, but, um, if you want to go to something else, I'll do it. Otherwise, maybe we can assign somebody else, and I can introduce, um, Marty, if that's what you'd like to do.
Uh, Councilmember Asaphadossen, do you have the proclamation?
I'm trying to open it. It's just not clear for some reason, so.
Oh, okay, so Katie sent it to you.
I have the proclamation. Would you like me to read the proclamation for you, uh, Councilmember?
Sure, but so I can introduce Marty though, um, if he's, if, uh, Mr. Marty Costa, are you here?
I am, thank you, yes.
Hello, I'm so sorry. I would have loved to do this, but thank you so much for being here. Um, he's the HDC Executive Director, and I have worked closely with him on different projects through, um, Housing Development Consortium, and I do appreciate all the work that you're doing with, um, the housing world, and, um, for being instrumental in starting the South King County housing and homelessness, um, um, what is it? South King County, I always forget, um.
Skip.
So, yeah, skip, and so, um, um, give me, can you give me one second, I think? Give me one second, I'm so sorry. Um.
That's okay.
So, it may open up for me.
Was it sent to you by Katie sent it to you this afternoon?
It was sent. I just, for some reason, I'm having challenges with my computer to, to get to it, that's all. So I just see it, I just can't really read it. So go ahead, if it's, if it's clear to you, um, Councilmember Coach Mars, go ahead, but
Okay.
I just wanted to finish it with that note with, um, Mr. Costa, and thank you for being here. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of Councilmember Asaphadossen, this is the Federal Way Proclamation for Affordable Housing Week, whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity, and whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, defines affordable housing as, uh, as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than thirty percent of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And I believe that's the thirty percent of the occupant's gross income. Whereas on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, Governor Inslee issued a statewide order to stay home, stay healthy, calling on all Washingtonians to avoid leaving their homes for any non-essential activities and adhere to social distancing requirements. And whereas the most recent point in time count found eight hundred and twenty-two people in our southwest King County sleeping outdoors without shelter in January of this year, and three thousand nine hundred and six Federal Way families are considered housing insecure because they were spending more than half of their income on rent and utilities, whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households. And whereas Governor Inslee has extended a residential eviction moratorium through October the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, uh, to prevent families and individuals from losing their housing due to non-payment. And whereas housing stability and staying socially distant from those outside of our household has become our state's core public health strategy. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in those properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole, and whereas the need for affordable homes across King County prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic and the number of people experiencing homelessness has remained at crisis levels. And whereas united to raise public awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week to elevate the critical need to preserve and increase affordable housing in our communities, and whereas the City of Federal Way endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so, recommits itself to ensuring that our community recovers equitable recovers equitable from the crisis at hand, and that all people in Federal Way live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now therefore, we the undersigned mayor and city council of the Federal Way do hereby proclaim the week of October the twelfth through the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, as Affordable Housing Week. Sign this sixth day of October two thousand and twenty by, by the Federal Way Mayor and all city council members.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Coach Mars. Uh, Marty, if you want to, if you have any comments?
Well, yes, thank you, Councilmembers Asaphadossen and Councilmember Kochmar, Mayor, other council members for this, and thank you also for allowing me to go second. That was a very heartwarming first proclamation, I think, for all of us, right? So, um, we really appreciate your faithfulness to Affordable Housing Week and the work that you're doing. I know many of you from my days at Habitat for Humanity, working in the Westway neighborhood, and it's always good to see all of you again. Why Affordable Housing Week? Well, yesterday was actually World Habitat Day, and the United Nations, uh, in its UN III Habitat Report declared that we need nine hundred and eighty-seven billion dollars worldwide to house everyone. In King County, we need forty-four thousand additional affordable homes every five years up until two thousand and forty, just to catch up. And here's the toughest one of all. In the last decade, we had a net loss of a hundred and twelve thousand affordable homes to families, eighty percent of area median income and below in King County due to rent increases. And so what we hope to do with Affordable Housing Week is continue to connect all of us locally to what we can do in spite of all the dysfunction we see around us in other areas of government. The pandemic has taught us that home is really important and how hard it is for many people to attain it or retain it. And we are going to have to continue this pressure on all of us to see this as a crisis and work together. We are in this together, and we appreciate you, the City of Federal Way, for all you are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Okay. All right, hey, Council, which, any, any, uh, closing thoughts on this? Me, uh?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Marty. Marty, is Habitat for Humanity still accepting furniture donations?
Certainly hope so. I don't work for them anymore, but they do have, I think, three, uh, stores in the area, and you should be able to find on the website if they are.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Moore. Oh, I see that comment went, Councilmember Asaphadossen.
Yeah, um, and I'd also like to take this, um, opportunity to plug in for a, um, livestream show, uh, livestream program coming up Monday, next Monday, the twelfth, at seven thirty, that HDC is, um, co-hosting, I believe, on The Color of Law, which talks about housing, um, um, and so with, um, the author's name. Richard Rothstein, yes. So if anyone is interested, I can actually give you, uh, more information on that. I would encourage people to attend. So I just wanted to take advantage of this time to do that.
Okay, great. Um, thank you. Uh, Council, anyone else? All right, thank you, Marty. I really appreciate it. I thank you, Councilmembers. Um, I appreciate that. Okay, so, um, now we're moving on to item C, update on Fusion Family Center. Uh, we've got Robin O'Grady, Executive Director, to talk to us about the exciting grand opening coming up, uh, this week. Actually, Robin, can you, uh, can you take two? I, you were sounding like you're a long ways away.
Yes, I'm wondering what I can do about that.
Actually, we got you. That's my, that's it.
Good, good.
All right, take two.
You bet. So I just wanted to thank, uh, Mayor Farrell and the City Council so much for your support of this project. Uh, we are, after two years of planning and a year of pretty intense renovation, we are, uh, actually finally, the, the construction dust is settling. Uh, we have our grand opening, uh, virtual livestream event scheduled for this Thursday at three PM, and you can find the link to that, uh, event on our Facebook page. I'm going to just turn this down. Hang on. I'm getting some weird feedback, you guys. Thank you. That's much better. Okay. Um, so, uh, a couple of things I wanted to share with you. The first thing that we've had some major hiccups during this, uh, project, uh, one of which was, uh, complete methamphetamine exposure and remediation process that had to happen to get the building cleaned up. Um, we had had some comments from community members mentioning that they, uh, believed that there was some meth activity happening at the hotel prior to us purchasing the hotel, and uh, of course, we did some testing and found out that it was covered with methamphetamine and, um, ended up having to have that remediation done, and then we also found out, uh, the the back dormers on the roof were completely destroyed under the roofing material and ended up having to get a whole new roof, and we also had a flood when a volunteer construction, uh, worker hit the sprinkler system with a saw. So we've had many challenges, um, you know, trying to get this, this construction completed, um, um, but currently what we're doing is we're finalizing our operations protocol and policy. We're recruiting our shelter team, and we're providing tours this week and next for our supporters, our donors, uh, our volunteers and, and the community as well. And we anticipate we'll be able to take our first families in mid-November, and, uh, this last quarter of two thousand and twenty, we're looking to serve twenty-nine families, approximately a hundred people, uh, with four thousand nine hundred and sixty bed nights, and we will also be providing eighty-eight family stability planning sessions, which will be face-to-face with our housing and employment specialists once we're able to get up and running. So, uh, we anticipate hitting the ground running. Uh, there's a lot to do, uh, to continue moving forward. Um, we've had some, you know, we've had some, uh, despite our challenges, uh, you may have heard that we did receive, uh, a large donation, uh, which will really help us um, launch the program, but we will also have an extremely, uh, aggressive fund development plan moving into two thousand and twenty-one to carry the project forward in the coming years. And again, I just, I wanted to, uh, thank so much the mayor and, and the, uh, city council for your support in this project. We hope um, to see you for tours. I know, Susan, you were in touch yesterday, so hopefully you got those tours set up, and I know the mayor's going to be saying a few words on, on Thursday at our event, and we're looking forward to that, and, um, gosh, I, uh, I think, I think that's it.
Fantastic. Well, thank you so much. We're looking forward to it, and, um, I see, uh, Councilmember Asaphadossen, oh, actually, let's do, uh, Council President Honda, and then, um, and then Council, uh, Councilmember Asaphadossen. Council President Honda.
Thank you. Congratulations, Robin, and Fusion for this amazing, um, achievement. It's really a dream come true, and I am just so thrilled that our families will, needing shelter, can stay in our own community and go to their own schools and be around their friends and, um, receive the help that they need here in Federal Way. It's just an amazing achievement. Thank you so much. And we did send out an email to council members asking today if, um, they would like a, a tour of the, the building, so I'm waiting back for that information, then we'll set up that, those tours. So thank you so much. Um, congratulations. I, I can hardly wait to see it. I I remember when Peggy and I walked through it, when it was a motel, and, um, when, uh, we knew it would be the perfect shelter, so thank you so much.
Thank you. It's come a long way, for sure.
Very good. I know, we're looking forward to it. We're very appreciative of the work that Fusion does in our community, and, and, uh, you know, this is a big project. It's a big undertaking, and, uh, but, you know, this is certainly what, uh, we, we knew that Fusion would be up for this, and it's very exciting. Council, any other words for, uh, for Robin and the, and Fusion and their project?
I had my hand yet, and I.
Oh, there you are. Okay, Councilmember Asaphadossen. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Robin. This is very exciting, and, um, yes, Susan, I've responded, so I look forward to the tour. Um, you know, when, um, when we talk about homelessness and shelter and the need, especially for our young students and for children who should be housed at all times, it does impact them significantly. It impacts their ability to uh, function well during school. Um, some of them come to school hungry, and so, um, this is such a huge step uh, in addition to what Fusion is already doing to shelter, um, families, uh, from, from being homeless. So I'm excited about this project, and thank you for involving us and, and, uh, along the way, uh, for keeping us posted as to what you've been doing, and, um, I just want to say thank you. It's a huge, 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 um, undertaking, and also something that we knew we've, um, uh, significantly needed, and so appreciate it, and I look forward to coming to Open House and/or to tour the, um, the facility, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Council, any other, um, any other comments? Okay, all right, uh, thank you, Robin, and, uh, we are at, uh, three o'clock for that event?
Yep, three PM Thursday.
Great, all right, uh, right there on Pacific Highway. All right, thank you, Robin, thank you.
Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
All right. Okay, okay, uh, now moving on to the Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. Um, as, uh, as the council knows, and just to let the community know as well, we are well into our budget presentations of, uh, with regard to, uh, department presentations, uh, for, uh, the budget. Earlier this evening at, um, uh, five o'clock, we did, uh, budget presentations for, um, uh, my office, the mayor's office, um, Economic Development and Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and also the city council as delivered by, uh, the council president. Um, and then, not last week, but the week before, we had about, gosh, about, uh, close to ten hours of meetings of, of budget presentations with police, public works, parks, um, IT, um, many, many of our departments. So it was a very, uh, um, um, very informative. Very informative, very helpful. And all of these were, not only are they carried on our website. Where you can see the primary meetings, you can all just, just go to YouTube where they're also concurrently recorded there as well. So. Just like this meeting is carried on YouTube. So that was, if you want to go back and take a look at any of those budget presentations or the materials or. Right there, that's all available on our website and on YouTube. But we can also get you the. PowerPoints if you're interested in that or any of the budget materials. So the biennial budget process is well underway. Love to hear from the public on this. Okay, quarterly meeting of the African-American Black Forum is, our next one is next Wednesday, the 14th at 7:00 PM. That's October 14th, 7:00 PM via Zoom. And we'll have that on the Facebook and out of the media. We'll make sure that the Zoom address is readily available for the public. That's open to the public and it's a great opportunity to have a discussion about the issues concerning the African-American Black community. So. It's going to be the second quarterly meeting and. Yeah, we're just, we're working on the agenda right now and hopefully we'll have a great meeting. We will have a great meeting on October 14. We had to reschedule the community litter pickup event that was several weeks ago due to the, the smoke from the wildfires. That was the same night that we had to cancel our movie. That's been rescheduled to October 17. October 17, we're going to gather at the PAC parking lot and, and set out from there. I think we're going to get started between. You know, 9:00 and 9:30 and then litter pickup is going to start from 10:00 and go to noon. And so. We're going to get, make sure that effort is spread out wide and far. With regard to. Getting word out, but we'd love to have you out there again, Saturday, October 17. Rain or shine. Okay, and then, let's see here, a report of the Federal Way Community Mental Health Day on September 26. At the, at the PAC. You know what? Despite the wind and the rain, I have to tell you, so with regard to this event, I just will have to give kudos to the sponsors of this. I've got a little story to tell, but. I want to thank the sponsors for the Federal Way Community Mental Health Day on that Saturday at 2:00 PM. And the sponsors were the Federal Way Black Collective and is led by Lynn Idahosa, the NAACP, King County Public Health, Progress Pushers. Thank you all for a great event. And I have to tell you, so right when my garage door, I was, I was heading out for the event, it was a little bit before 2:00 to get there, right when it started. And as soon as I opened my garage door and I was, I was going to get in my car, I just saw the deluge come down and I thought, oh no. Because I knew they were, they were setting up outside of the PAC. And as soon as I got there, almost exactly at 2:00. I, I missed the squall, which was this, all this wind, all of the tents, the garbage cans. Everything that had been stood up was knocked over. And everybody that had been, that set up, all the volunteers, the stereo equipment. People were drenched. And so I, I thought, oh my God. And right when I pulled up in the parking lot, people were sort of running to their cars and the event was teetering. On, on, you know, they would have got back out, but I think everybody was wet and cold. I want to thank Brian Hoffman because, well, the first thing was we, we had to reach out to. We had to reach out to John Hutton and, no, 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 it was Ray Gross to make sure that we were compliant with. COVID-19 procedures about getting people inside. And at that point, we moved the event inside. I called Brian Hoffman with Spectra. And on his day off, he came in immediately and we, we were able to let everybody in before we set up the tables. And they, they pressed on and got dry and despite the wind and the rain and we, they came inside and they doubled the amount of participation. For COVID testing in person and virtual mental health appointments from their previous event. So they took. They made some serious, eliminated some lemons right off the bat. So I'd like to thank Brian. From Spectra and our Performing Arts and Event Center. And Bill Vedino was there and he provided assistance. And again, those sponsors. So. It was a, it was a successful event, but. We just didn't have the heart to say, stay outside. You gotta, we let him into our PAC and it turned out to be a great event. So. So it all worked out. Let's see here. Let's see. Oh. We have a, a big, big, big event coming up on November 6th, which is the Time Capsule Event. I want to make sure everybody knows that we are doing a 30-year time capsule on the Friday of the general election. That's going to be November 6th, at the PAC parking lot. We're going to be doing an unveiling of the. Of the plaque and we're going to be discussing the things that are going in to our 30-year time capsule that'll be open. This is our 30-year anniversary year. And little did we know how historic 2020 would be. But we're looking ahead to 2050 and when it's going to be our 60-year anniversary. And we've got all kinds of things we're working. I'd like to thank Council President Honda and Councilmember. Coachmar and Historical Society President. Diane Noble-Goleford and, and the involvement of the Historical Society, the involvement of the school district and quite a number of people. That are, and again. Bill Vedino, who's helping and Tyler as well. And many of you saw, may have seen in the news article in the paper, we've got the time capsule, which is sort of, it's a little bit like an Egyptian sarcophagus a little bit. So what are the dimensions, Bill? Or Tyler? Tyler knows the dimensions. Yeah, it's, it's, it's big. I saw a comment online. It says, it looks big enough for the mayor to get in. So it was kind of funny. Which I did not reply to. So anyway, we're going to have a lot of fun with it, you guys. We're gonna, while we celebrate our 30-year anniversary, we're really looking ahead to. The next 30 years and we're taking, to make sure a lot of pictures are in there and, and so. Anyway, that's what we're working on. That's my report. And. Council President Honda, any, any, anything to add in regard to the time capsule?
Well, I was going to say I could lay in there for sure. It's five feet long and so it just fits me perfectly, but. You know, if, if as a community member, if you have anything that you would like us to consider putting in, please let us know. Contact the mayor's office or any of the council members and we'll. Get your item and not everything that is, is given to us will. Fit in there, but as much as we can and we will get in, it'll be really exciting. It'll be really fun to see what people want to put in so that people. Remember 2020, not for what the year has given to us, but. For what the community is.
Right, right. We'll have, we'll have all the stuff about COVID and, and we'll have, you know, samples of masks and, and. We have gloves. What's going to be fun is it's going to be the Friday after the presidential election. So. We'll, we'll at least get some indication of which direction that's going and we'll, we'll see how that all works out, but very historic year and, and, you know, it's, it's interesting. So Federal Way's come a long way in 30 years. It's going to become a lot, going to go a lot further the next 30. So anyway, very, very fun and exciting. Okay, let's move on to council committee reports. For our council committees, we've got Parks, Recreation, Human Services and Public Safety. Councilmember Coachmar.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I was kind of thinking whoever opens that sarcophagus in 2050. You might want to disinfect it first. Who knows? Who knows, you know?
Right, right. They'll start, they'll start the COVID all over again. Oh my God, that'd be a great movie. That'd be a good TV movie of the week.
Well, hey, Indiana Jones and all those.
You're right.
Open this thing and all this other stuff comes out. Okay, October 13th at 5:00 PM is our next Parks meeting. And some of the items that are going to be on the agenda is some very, very important things. A. Portable Toilet Services Contract Amendment. And this is what I really like. It's a contract amendment for tree services and the name of the company is Thundering Oak Enterprises. You know, thundering, falling over. Interesting. So then we've got a Department of Justice Bureau Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program. And then we've got the Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team and the US Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration, the DEA. High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for Task Force Agreements. And then the Valley Independent Investigation Team Agreement. All very important things. And then we have a, a resolution for pooling funding between South King County. Housing and Homeless Partners and cities related to affordable and supportive housing, the sales and use tax. And I think we got an email today that said that they wanted us to support the King County Sales and Use Tax. And then South King County and Home, South King County and Homelessness Partners, it's the budget for that. Sarah Bridgeford will present that. For, as well as the same thing, the South King County Homeless Partners for the Work Plan for 2021, 2022. We've also added two items. At councilmember, at Vice. Council President Honda's suggestion, accurate count of the homeless folks in Federal Way rather than all of South King County. We'd like to know. What an accurate count is for the homeless folks in just our city. And then we've also added on a discussion. About a community forums over and above the ones that we already meet with, like the Korean community. And the Black and African-American community. Are, you know, are there any other communities that would like to meet with us? Just a discussion on that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. That's quite a report. Thank you. Okay, Land Use Transportation Committee. Is that Councilmember Berusso?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have two items for consent agenda on our agenda tonight for master lease agreement with the. New cell wireless PC, PSC, ILC for, for small wireless facilities. And item C, American Disabilities ADA Transportation Transition, excuse me. Plan update. We also have one item on council business, which is, is discussion on the ordinance. On the comprehensive plan of rezoning amendment for shelter resources. We had a meeting last night, yesterday, and we are reviewing. Four items for action, excuse me, for consent for our next meeting on October 20. One is the King County Flood Control District 2020 Flood Reduction Grant Acceptance. We have a resolution, Modified Transportation Systems Capital Improvement Plan. And authorization to accept grant funding for transportation improvement project. Variable lane control authorization control contract expenditure increase. And last item, 2019 Storm Pipe Prepare Phase Two Project Acceptance. We are also being one item for our first reading demanding the conditions for college housing in the Federal Way Vice Code 19-250. Our next meeting is Monday at 5:00 on November 2. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Train.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our committee met on September 22. And we approved several items that are on the consent agenda today for your consideration. Also, we have one item on the council business. I just want to. Highlight the proposed resolution. To reduce the. The risk, the risk management fund reserve from $1.2 million to $0.6 million. The reason is that because the city is no longer self-insure for liability claims. And we are now covert under the AWC. So that is the reason why we propose. To reduce the $1.2 million, $1.2 million down to $0.6 million. So our next meeting is going to be on October 27, 2020. It is going to be on Zoom again. And with that, I conclude my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you very much. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Sephardoson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to report on. We, our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, the 14th at 10:00 AM. Thank you so much.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. The regional committees report, the Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. Council President report.
Well, that's me. So the interviews for Council Position Five will be on October 15. I believe they start at 5:15, 5:30, but I know the time was kind of changing. And we look forward to hearing from the five applicants and choosing our next council member because we need seven. We feel like there's a hole in the council. With just six of us. So that'll be on Zoom. We, as a council, really, really wanted to hold these meetings. In person and the governor's proclamation does not allow us to do that. So. It will unfortunately have to be held on Zoom. I would also, I would like to encourage everyone to please come to the Federal Way cleanup. October 17th, Saturday, rain or shine, like the mayor said. Let's clean Federal Way up. When you drive around, you can see that there's, there's. Trash, things that need to be picked up. Everything will be provided to you. You can pick an area or to clean up or we can assign you an area. You can work for an hour or two hours, whatever is convenient for you, but please come and make this a big community event to clean Federal Way up. It's, it'll, the city will. Be more beautiful than it is and it'll be great to be around the community. It will be safe. We will make it safe. Do follow all of the COVID rules. And get Federal Way cleaned up. And. Like the public to know, as, as the mayor talked about, it is budget season. We are continuing to have. Reports from the different departments on their, their budgets. We haven't had as much community input as we've had in the past and that concerns me. So I would encourage the community, our citizens, our businesses. To, to look at our budget presentations and if you have any questions, to please let us know because. This is a budget for the next two years and it's a very important document. We would really like to have citizen input. So. Please don't hesitate to contact us. We've had a few questions, but not, not the questions that, not the amount that we usually have, which is a concern. So. Please get involved. We, we really would appreciate that. So that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I, I do want to say a special shout out. Speaking about cleaning up Federal Way, as many of you know, we have been very concerned about the RVs and the trash. Along Pacific Highway south of 356. And on the east, especially on the east side of Pacific Highway, where a number of RVs had been parking. I want to give a special shout out and thank you to our Public Works Department and our Police Department. Public Works, we, we. Had decided that we were going to put up no parking signs along there. And our, our crews, first of all, got all that trash that was alongside where those RVs were. And with the assistance and standby of our Police Department, got all that debris and garbage cleaned up. That was step one. Step two was we finally got the signs that we had been trying to fabricate. We normally get our signs fabricated from King County. But because they were taking frankly, their own sweet time, we had to use our, a special, a private company. To go get them made and we did it. We got those delivered. The no parking signs got them delivered on Friday and they have been installed now. And, and then, just as, as of today, and today, and I believe yesterday. We, we, the Public Works Department under the leadership of EJ. Got the new barriers on the east side of the PAC highway put up to where now it's no longer possible for those RVs to set up. It's not physically possible. So that whole area now is cleaned up and I want to let you know that it was very concerning to the people that live in that area, to the school that was directly across the street. And I fielded many phone calls and actually personally went out there myself with staff. So. That's the kind of thing where we owe it to our community to make sure we don't have, you know, developing issues like that. So. Want to thank them once again. EJ, anything you'd like to say on that?
No, I think you summarized it pretty well there.
Okay. All right. Um, and.
I have a question.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
So if something is, a vehicle is parked there. And they're not supposed to be with the no parking signs, do they, are they tagged and then 24 hours later they're removed? Or how is that going to work?
Oh, EJ, I think you're muted now.
So we, I would actually defer that to the chief. We post the signs, but then police actually handles enforcement.
Chief?
There's a little bit of discretion if it presents a traffic hazard that could immediately be towed. There's a little bit of discretion if it presents a traffic hazard that could immediately be towed. If, you know, a vehicle broke down and, you know, the officer may just want to tag it if it's safely pulled off the side of the road. But bottom line is it needs to be promptly moved. You don't want someone who ran out of gas and then boom, you know, they come back with the tank gone. So we want to be reasonable, but it is a, that stretch right there, just so you know, over the years, we've had serious injury fatality collisions. It is high speed, highest speed that we have within our own city. So people being parked on the side, standing there, it's just not safe. So I think the steps that we took as a city makes that area much safer and certainly will reduce the rate and number of complaints that we've received from our citizens, neighboring businesses and schools from there.
And we also have been working on the encampments off 348th, off Pack Highway in that area as well. And the no parking signs and the, that were also in the process of being installed on 359th, which is essentially that connector road between Pack Highway and Todd Beamer High School. So that's a frequent area of garbage dumping and these parking of these RVs. Not IVs, RVs. There's dumping of IVs. But anyway, we're all over this. And I think it's very incumbent upon us to make sure that we have a clean community and a lawful community. Any other question? Yes, please.
So last spring, I believe, Elinos approached us about the semis that are parked around their area. And we had agreed that we would put no parking signs there. We needed the money to purchase the signs and to install them. I think that's in EJ's budget.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
But it would be great if we could move quickly on that, too. I know that, I mean, I drive there at least twice a week to check out, see how it is. And, you know, for a while, it was pretty empty today. The whole area is full of cars again, which means businesses are working, which is great. But it is a real safety issue with all the vehicles over there.
Yeah, we'll get that done. EJ, anything? Thank you, Council President. EJ, any update on that?
No, that was included in the budget request and approved by the mayor. And that was one of the things I presented to council for 2021. So as soon as we have the funding to do it, we'll get it knocked out. So.
Very good. Okay. Okay. A lot of work being done. Thank you, council, for your partnership. Okay, now let's move on to citizen comment. Stephanie?
Yes, Mayor. All right. First people we have up is Cindy Panett, Robin Corack, and Michael Reed. We have them all three on the line.
All right. Cindy is allowed to talk, but she is unmuted, currently muted. Still muted, Mayor. She's not by phone, so she won't have to press the star six. But she will just need to unmute her microphone.
Cindy, can you unmute?
Can you hear me now? Oh, good.
We can, yes.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, Mayor Farrell and council members. I'm here tonight with Mark Panett, and hopefully Kathy Dormire and Kathy Jorgensen are on the call. The four of us are here on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Seattle King County's Environmental Committee. After years of not meeting climate goals for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, largely due to growth in our region, King County has recently developed a strategic climate action plan called SCAP. And this past week has issued a Climate Action Toolkit, or CAT. The Toolkit is designed to be a flexible guide for cities in all stages of climate planning to help us develop customized climate strategies and to reach significant climate goals. Working together on this plan will help us mitigate the climate crisis we are in for a sustainable future. The League of Women Voters has a long history of successfully promoting democracy in local governments and advancing sustainable climate change legislation. We were attracted by the county's invitation to all 39 city councils within its borders to work on strategic goals for climate change. Our environmental committee is made up of League volunteers that live in a majority of the 39 cities in King County. Since the League shares the same geographic footprint, we are sub-grouped by county, district. In Federal Way, that would be me, Cindy Panett, with Mark Panett, Kathy, and Kathy. Our intent is to support the city in which we live to realize our city's locally determined climate goals and priorities. As League volunteers, we want to assist the city of Federal Way in reaching the climate goals that you deem important by utilizing the League values of democracy, equity, and a systems approach of cross-sharing with other county, district teams. Involving diverse groups of people will gain broad public support and better understanding of what is trying to be done, which can bring success in changing human behaviors. So what I'm asking at this point are two things. Number one, it is our hope that someone on the council will contact me to begin a relationship so that we can better further your as well as our community's climate goals. And the second thing is I would like to bring to your attention that on October 8th, this Thursday, the same day that Fusion is opening their family center, that Executive Constantine has invited all mayors and city council members to a work session with agenda items to include an overall overview of the Toolkit and discussion of climate preparedness plans and priorities in King County's Strategic Climate Action Plan, which is the SCAP, with updated greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. An invitation was sent to you last week with the full agenda. Hopefully, some or all of you will attend so that we can bring to work, we can begin to work together to make this a healthier planet. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Wow, wow. Within eight, nine seconds to spare. You couldn't have timed that better. You've been practicing on this, I can tell.
I read it a few times.
Very nice. Very nice. Okay. Okay. All right. And next. Thank you, Cindy.
We have Robin Corack up next, Mayor.
Great. Hi, Robin.
Hi, Robin Corack with the Multi Service Center. First of all, Mayor Farrell and Federal Way City Council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am speaking to you tonight in support of the rezon request for the Redondo Heights project. This is actually a joint project between Multi Service Center and Shelter Resources Incorporated. And we've worked with SRI on almost all of our other projects, including Mitchell Place and William J. Wood. The Redondo Heights project would preserve aging housing stock already existing in Federal Way and add much-needed affordable housing primarily for Federal Way families where one or more of the household members is working but simply can't afford the rising costs of market-rate housing. This project would serve incomes between 50% to 70% of area median income, which is approximately $62,000 to about $86,000 for a four-person household. We would also have services on site to help people with employment retention, wage progression, and other resources. As you may know, Sound Transit is promoting workforce housing near transit sites, and King County has allocated funding for this project. We believe this rezon request will have a low neighborhood impact. We believe that it is the best and highest use, given that there is currently only one access point to the property through the existing Silver Shadows apartments. And given that zoning for neighboring properties is almost all business, commercial, multifamily, it does, it is directly connected to transit. Currently, there is a homeless encampment on the vacant lot that neighbors have expressed concern about. We have been proactive with the Federal Way School District. I had talked with Dr. Campbell over a year ago when we first started designing the project, and just met with her this last March to talk with her in more depth, just make sure infrastructure was there and see how we could work together, and to see if there were any concerns. And there were no concerns expressed at that time. And upon project completion, we would be the managing member for all intents and purposes, the owner and operator as we are on all of our other affordable housing properties. So I would encourage you to strongly consider supporting the rezon request, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you very much, Robin.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see here. Next speaker.
Next, we have Michael Reed and then Mark Simpson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Michael Reed. I'm a principal engineer at Transportation Engineering Northwest. And I've been asked on behalf of Shelter Resources to be available tonight to answer any questions that you have about traffic, parking, or other issues related to the rezon request. That concludes my statement.
All right. Thank you very much, Michael.
Certainly.
Okay, next speaker.
Mark Simpson.
All right, Mark, you're up. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Mark Simpson, and I'm with Bumgardner Architects. And for the last few years, we've been working with the Multi Service Center and Shelter Resources on the five-acre rezon that you've heard them describe earlier. We've just done a number of workforce housing projects with Shelter Resources over the last 30 years, including one that was an affordable housing project in the middle of the predominantly single-family highlands that is really indistinguishable from any of the single-family homes in terms of quality up there. And I want to mention that this site is within a half mile of the new light rail station. It's immediately adjacent to the existing park and ride. And to achieve access, since it is not on 99, the owner purchased the Silver Shadows, 132-unit, 1970s-era development. And it will serve as the front door for this project. So it is going to be renovated as part of this project. It'll have new roofs, new siding, new decks, new windows, and new color schemes. We're also going to significantly improve the entry in the frontage, which will include, improve how the project Silver Shadows looks by widening it and increasing the landscape in the areas. Also, the two sites will become one. In that way, Silver Shadows will gain access to added amenity spaces, play areas, and a large central open space that we're planning for the middle of this five-acre site. I just wanted to mention that I, too, will be available if you have any questions during your discussion of this project. That ends my statement.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, Mayor. Next, we have Brandon Fletcher and Mary Fierke and Shannon McCannan.
Hello.
Hi, Brandon.
Yeah, hi. My name's Brandon Fletcher. Thanks, Mayor Farrell, and to the council. I'm talking with Washington Can, and I just have three quick things that I like to voice my opinion on as a citizen. I'd like to see you guys look at considering the extension of the stability program to April for people who are having a rough time due to COVID and paying their rent. Number two, look at the possibility of helping tenants forgive their rent that they're past due on due to the COVID situation by possibly looking at making it, I guess, how do I say, advising landlords on maybe writing it off as a tax loss potentially. I don't know if that could be done, but I think it's something, you know, worth looking into. And potentially, you know, making it to where that would work with, you know, any landlord that would be considered a corporation. I wouldn't propose that for, you know, a person that owns a house and is renting it to somebody. But the major corporations, I think they can definitely help out, you know, more with what's going on. And then if you guys do extend the stability program, it'd be nice to see if the city, and I'm not sure if you guys are enforcing it, but just have some teeth behind it because some of the landlords and the, you know, the corporations, they don't really follow the rules all the time. And if there's nobody to help the citizen who, or the, you know, the tenant, they're kind of on their own. That's my time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mary Fierke is next, Mayor.
Okay. Evening, Mary.
Mary is connected by phone, so she might have to press star six to unmute. There we go.
Thank you. I'm speaking regarding the renters' stability extension. I spoke more fully at the September 15th council meeting regarding the challenges faced by renters in our Federal Way community. During tonight's meeting, valuable information was given by Marty regarding affordable housing rates and by Robin regarding the Fusion shelters. Safe, secure housing is crucial. October 15th is the scheduled end of the current rental moratorium. Please pass the renters' stability extension. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next, Mayor is Shannon McCannan, followed by Ashley Cormier.
Good evening. Hello, Mayor, council members, and our city's very hardworking staff. My name is Shannon McCann. I'm a middle school special education teacher here in Federal Way and also the proud president of the Federal Way Education Association. We are also a member institution of the Sound Alliance, which is united for the common good. So I want to first begin by thanking you for passing the Affordable Housing Proclamation and your recommitment to safe, healthy, and affordable housing. I'm here with some general comments in support of further affordable housing in our neighborhood and also agreeing with the previous speakers around a support for rental stability extension. Our 1,700 members are very driven to advocate for housing solutions. Quite frankly, it's hard to learn without a staple place to live. Councilmember Asavadasan also spoke to that earlier. Through no fault of their own, many of our students' families have suffered a job loss because of the pandemic. We know, for example, many of our high school students are picking up extra shifts, trying to make the ends meet for their families. Our teachers are reporting very creative ways of meeting the needs of students who have already lost housing. But we do know that there's kids currently living in grocery store parking lots and housing instability. As you know, last year, and Data cited earlier in this meeting, we have hundreds of kids experiencing homelessness. So wanted to be here tonight to hopefully work together and prevent that number from getting any larger. Let's keep our renters in housing, give families a sense of relief past the governor's proclamation date, which is October 15th. We are still in a pandemic. We are, we were in a housing crisis before we even got into this pandemic. And the best way to help those facing housing instabilities is to keep them in the housing that they are already in. So I do want to lift up that we are all, I don't know all your financial situations, but I'm assuming that we are all closer to experiencing homelessness than to being millionaires. And it could take a job loss, it could take a car accident, it could take COVID, or it could be a veteran battling PTSD, and that's where all of us come in, to use our privilege however we can to serve. And tonight I heard the phrase earlier, "We want to be a community for all." And keeping our students' families who happen to be renters in their homes is part of that. As you know, of course, an extension also still means that landlords will get paid. As an educator, we work night and day for our students to have a bright future, and we know the health impacts of losing housing. So I hope we can work together to ensure that our children stay healthy and stay in their homes. Thank you for your consideration and hard work.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, ready for the next speaker.
Mayor, the last two we have connected are Ashley Cormier and Cynthia Rix-Macatan. We are looking for three people that signed up that we do not match up. That's Nico Purcell, Lucia Faithful, and Lenaida Hossa. If any of those three are on the line, if they can virtually raise their hand, Thomas can unmute them after the next two speakers.
Okay. Who's next? Ashley?
Yep, and Ashley is via phone, so she might have to press star six to unmute herself. There we go.
All right. Hi, Ashley.
Oh, hey, Mayor. How's it going? Hello, City Council members. I come here today, I do want to say thank you for all of your guys' work that you guys have been doing around housing and for passing the Affordable Housing Proclamation. That's really great work. And I do appreciate all that you guys do for the city of Federal Way. I also come here to Earth City Council, as you've heard from other folks, to pass a renters' stability extension. This is something that we'll be really persistent and like adamant about, making sure that we can have a long-term protection that'll help renters stay in their homes. The stress and anxiety of like waiting months and months for the governor to extend the moratorium for the state is just like too much, you know. It was October 15th. Now there are possible talks about like 45 more days, and it is just like a constant, like, waiting game. And renters need to know that Federal Way cares by taking a stand for renters and taking charge of their own, like quote-unquote, moratorium to protect renters. We're calling it renters' stability extension once again, and the main point is that it'll allow renters to- And the main point is that it'll allow renters to breathe and just give them the time to catch up while still being in their home. And it'll be city-led by Federal Way, which will be really great for the city to take a big stance on getting this passed. Eviction like will impact many families, including many families of children, as you heard from Shannon in school, like who rely on virtual learning. And when renters are evicted and become homeless and no longer becomes just that family's issue, it becomes the community's issue as well. So council member Coach Mara mentioned earlier, like what other communities would like to talk with us? And I'd like to say that renters do, you know, renters are their own like culture and a really big culture in Federal Way. So I'm excited to continue the talk of planning a renters community forum in the city and also passing a renters stability extension for the city and working with the city on how we can exactly have long-term protections outside of rental assistance. It requires no money from the city, just more support, you know, making sure that, more support for renters and just standing up to allow them a way to stay in their homes. And let's be honest, like winter's coming, let's just be smart about other options outside of, once again, rental assistance and really urge you to pass a renters stability extension policy. And I can definitely talk more with council members and the mayor as well about what that looks like and how we can work together to make sure that folks in the city are feeling valued and can stay in their home and can focus on their already day-to-day life rather than like stressing about like, is the moratorium going to be extended? What am I going to do next? So on and so forth. So that's all I have to say. Thank you guys for your work and I really look forward to working with you guys on, once again, getting more protections for renters in Federal Way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Next up Cynthia Ricks-MacIntyre.
Cynthia.
Hello, good evening, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for this opportunity. Mayor, thank you for your commitment to continue reading with quarterly Those of the African Diaspora. I would like to do a personal thank you to Tim Johnson for the wonderful staff presentation he gave at the special city council meeting prior to this one. That was very informative and just appreciate your efforts in making sure that small businesses have access to resources during this time and trying to find the most creative and best way to distribute funds. I would also like to thank the rest of the city staff. You've been awesome and wonderful as various people from the African diaspora community come and approach you about statistics and data, about the various programs that are offered through the city and finding out about resources to really help our community. So thank you. Tonight, what I'm primarily here to talk about are the city's council's goals and the proposed budget. So let's start with the city council goals. Goals for this next biennium budget, it would be great if you could add a declaration and a commitment to eradicating racism and declaring racism a public health crisis in line of everything that we've been going on, seeing the disparate impact of COVID on the BIPOC community, meaning Black Indigenous and people of color. It would be great to have our city council denounce racism, declare it as a public health crisis, and then commit to creating goals and programs that address racism and that help to ensure that any policies and programs that we have that maybe perhaps have a racist component to it or perceived one are addressed. In terms of the budget, some things that we did not see in the budget and it would be great to do is to have a director of inclusion and equity, a director of diversity, equity and inclusion, excuse me, a full FTE, someone who would recruit and retain, help for the recruitment and retention of a diverse workforce, someone who could be the liaison to BIPOC communities and those communities with unique needs. Another thing would be an independent citizens review committee to look at our public safety policies and to make sure that they are equitable, inclusive, and diverse. These are just some of the items that could be in the budget to show the city's commitment to anti-racist policies and protecting vulnerable populations in our community, specifically BIPOC. Please consider those things in your budget this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Okay.
Next up Mayor is Lenida Hosa.
Evening, Len, and I believe it's Eda Hosa.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Sorry, sorry, Len.
It's okay, we'll get it. Evening, Len.
So much for giving me an opportunity this evening. I was really glad to hear a number of things today. I was able to attend the special meeting earlier. Thank you, Robin Corack, for your comments earlier with MSC. I'm really glad that we're hearing from them because right now we have needs in the community and the reality is we need projects like those. Multi-service center is a trusted name and truly affordable projects. When I see the HHM properties, I see a model that's been a huge disadvantage to our community because it overboard burdens our community supports. But MSC has always been a responsible community partner. If we're going to build new projects, we should be thinking about how to do so in a response socially responsible model. And I definitely know we can expect that working with them. I watched the land use and tax committee meeting earlier and heard mention of removing affordability protections for the Mary Lake project. And I'd like to understand why that would be a consideration. Other communities such as renters have been very vocal about wanting to talk to council. Let's make that happen. We've got to stop and think about the decisions we're making every day that you guys are making on your committees. I'm really proud of the work Washington Can has been doing in the community, but they and other organizations like them need more support from city council. I said it last year and I want to say it again, all of us go home to our warm homes that join these community meetings while we have people suffering and struggling. We need you all to be making decisions that are about the issues we are currently facing every day as residents of Federal Way. Representative Coach Mara, a lot of what you mentioned in your report has been a point of conversation in the community. What have you done to find out from the community how they feel about those agreements that you guys are working on? You mentioned a ton of lists and partnerships and projects they want endorsement of, but what do they truly entail? How are you applying an equity lens as you are all moving forward? That can't wait until after our diversity training next year or even after the current budget discussions and we're all depending on you. Councilmember Tran, I had a chance to catch the special meeting earlier and I really appreciated your breakdown, Mayor Farrell as well, of the process of how things would be step by step on the target property. I was a little concerned about how there was kind of a rush. I pay a lot of attention to these meetings and I heard nothing about a parking lot discussion or a paved parking lot. And that would be a huge concept shift from what publics even had conversations about. So that kind of rush there, Mayor Farrell, I just commend you for stopping that and being like, this is the process that we all need to follow. Because that is directly what people are asking for in the public, we're asking for public buy-in on your decisions. So what is the plan for resident participation? I appreciate a lot of the council, of what council president Honda shared, but it puts a ton of responsibility on residents to find a way to reach out to you via email. And as community has continued to share, that doesn't work, they don't feel heard. Regardless of if meetings are in person or not, for years, the community has asked for more inclusive ways to communicate. You guys need to be putting out surveys and making the results publicly available because the reality is that by not introducing a plan, we're waiting for something from public health, from the governor, when we can be prepared to make this best of the situation we have facing us, we need to find time. We understand that you all work on a part-time basis, but you need to plan to make the best of that time and continuing to use your part-time status as a barrier instead of addressing it is planning consistently to fail. And the kind of work we need you all to do does not require you to attend a training together, it requires you to be better community leaders. Citizens is a very out of touch term. I urge you to all make a commitment today, right now, tonight, to stop saying citizens and say residents and use more inclusive language. Thank you.
Thanks, Len. Okay. Stephanie?
Sorry, Mayor, we just had one more person sign up. I was trying to send her the link to get on, so we'll see if that happens. I have four letters to read also.
Okay.
Okay, are you ready? The first one is Renee Ewing, written comments to the Federal Way City Council. It's my understanding that Federal Way Council will be considering the rezoning request for MSC and the SRI concerning the five acres adjacent to the existing Silver Shadow Apartments. I strongly urge the council to approve this rezoning request as a community member and the MSC board president. This project will provide much-needed affordable housing for Federal Way residents. Below are bullet points with some background and supporting information. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our request. Redondo Heights is a project of the Multi Service Center in conjunction with its co-developer, SRI Shelter Resources. MSC proposes to make significant capital improvements to existing aging housing stock known as Silver Shadows and enable 130 units of additional workforce housing on the site adjacent to Silver Shadows. SRI currently owns Silver Shadows. The proposed workforce, workforce housing would serve incomes between 50 to 70% of the area median income, which translates to roughly $62,000 to $86,900 for a four-person household. This aligns with current housing needs in Federal Way. There's currently a homeless encampment on the vacant five acre site in question. Neighbors who live close, in close proximity to the site support the rezon and subsequent potential development of the site. MSC's CEO and Director of Affordable Housing Development, along with key personnel at SRI, met with Federal Way Public School Superintendent Dr. Tammy Campbell to bring her up to date on the project and discuss potential impacts. Dr. Campbell did not have any concerns about the project or its potential impact. In addition, King County supports this project and has allocated funding for it. Sound Transit is also an advocate for workforce housing in this area, which is next to the future Star Lake Link Station and is in close proximity to the bus rapid transit as well. All other zoning for neighborhood properties is multifamily or business commercial. This combined with the limited access on the vacant site makes it unlikely to be attractive to any single-family or cottage housing developers. That ends that letter. All right, reset the clock. Next letter is from Amanda Santo, Director of Operations and Housing Developments for MSC. Says, hello, this is commentary for the Federal Way City Council meeting for October 6th, public comment on land use change. Thank you, council members, for your time today. My, my name is Amanda Santo, Director of Operations and Affordable Housing at MSC. MSC's mission is building a future without poverty by creating pathways to help hope and dignity for our neighbors. A critical component is safe, affordable, and healthy housing. Redondo Heights project is a joint venture between MSC and SRI, a longstanding successful partnership. The project will make improvements and preserve existing affordable housing at Silver Shadows Apartments while also adding a potential of 130 units. Federal Way residents are in critical need for workforce housing for moderate-income households. Redondo Heights will enhance the strength of the community. I strongly urge council members to vote yes in support of this today rezoning request. That's the second letter. Next letter is from Dave Berger and it reads, to President Susan Honda and city council members, I'm writing as a member of the Multi Service Center Board of Directors and Federal Way resident regarding your October 6, 2020 council discussion item number 6B entitled Ordnance Comprehensive Plan Rezone Amendment for Shelter Resources. Although the applicant is Shelter Resources Inc., SRI, it's important to note that MSC is a co-developer of the five acre transit-oriented workforce housing project in Redondo Heights. That is the purpose of the requested amendment. MSC has partnered with SRI and other successful housing projects, including most recently our widely praised William J. Wood Veterans House here in Federal Way. Supplementing information provided at September's LUTC meeting by city CDD staff and the applicant in responding to some questions posed at that time, here are some, here are some additional key facts to the city council members to consider, sorry. One, the requested land use zoning amendment would enable development of 130 new housing units, which would be built adjacent to the existing Silver Shadows apartment complex. SRI has purchased the older Silver Shadows apartments in order to rehabilitate them and to provide access to and be part of the five acre new housing units project site. Upon project completion, MSC would be the managing partner and operator of both the Silver Shadows and new apartment units. Two, existing zoning designation of neighboring properties are all multifamily or business commercial. Combined with limited access to the vacant portion of the project site, it appears unlikely to be attractive to any single-family or cottage type housing developers. Number three, it's my understanding that a homeless encampment currently exists on the vacant portion of the project site. Neighbors who live in close proximity to the site have expressed support for our requested rezoning and subsequent project development. Number four, our CEO, Robin Corack, her staff and principals of SRI met with Federal Way Public School Superintendent Dr. Tammy Campbell earlier this year to update her on the project and discuss its potential effects on enrollment. Dr. Campbell did not express any concerns about the project or its potential impact. Number five, King County supports this workforce, workforce housing project and has appropriated funding for it. Sound Transit is also an advocate of workforce housing in this project location, which is very near the future Star Lake Link Light Rail Station. It's also close proximity to the King County Metro Rapid Transit Bus Stop and Park and Ride Lot. I hope this additional information proves helpful to your October 6th discussion and I urge your approval for the proposed comprehensive plan rezoning amendment when placed on the city council agenda for action. Dave Berger. And the last letter I have is from Toletta Holmes. It says, my name is Toletta Holmes and I am both an MSC board member and a resident of the Silver Shadows Apartment Complex. As a resident of Silver Shadows, I am very pleased about the possibility of a rezon for the vacant five acres east of our apartment complex. The vacant lot has been a homeless encampment for some years now and has brought about numerous issues, public health and safety being top priority for my neighbors and myself, who is highly supportive of the potential rezon and development of that site. I'm excited about the Redondo Heights project because it will bring much-needed affordable housing in Federal Way for families who are working and simply cannot afford the increasing rental rates at many complexes. After hearing about the recent sale of the property, I became so overjoyed to find out that MSC's partner, SRI, would be the buyer. It was also the reason I decided to continue living at the Silver Shadows because I was at the point of moving out due to major improvements that needed to be made. The complex needs major improvements and repairs that were left untouched by the previous owner. MSC has proposed to make significant capital improvements to the aging housing stock, which King County supports and allocated funding for. Currently, my neighbor, who is a 63-year-old disabled man in a wheelchair, is displaced for the second time because pipes bursting underground. The first time it was in his bathroom, they had to be ripped apart. This time, the pipes busted under his kitchen. Can you imagine how pleased we are about this proposed development that would finally give the complex the attention it needs because it's 40 years overdue? With the future Star Lake Link Station and Metro Rapid Bus Transit being so close to the property, the proposed additional workforce housing will give access to more employment opportunities to all residents living here and in future development. As both a community member and MSC board member, I ask you to strongly consider approving the rezon requests submitted by MSC and SRI. Request for the parcel in question, which definitely aligns with current housing needs in the community, I found referenced in 22 years ago today. Thank you in advance for your consideration, Toletta Holmes.
Okay, anybody else on the line?
Mayor, we do have the person that just signed up for citizen comment, Sai Samanini, I believe, is on the line.
Okay. Hi, Sai.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, now we can, yes.
Okay. And thank you for allowing me to public comment. I just wanted to give a shout out to Mayor Farrell for being amazing at the Federal Way Day of Mental Health and COVID testing. We appreciate you very much. I just wanted to underscore the point made by my colleagues about evictions, rezoning, housing, and affordability. I discussed this with some of the council members, but if any of you want to ride along one day at 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM with me, you will see that there are unaccompanied minors walking around on our streets and the number of unhoused people is growing. And our businesses are already stressed by COVID, unbreathable air, and just 2020 in general. And the last thing that we need is to make poor investments around housing and affordability and preventing evictions and having even more unhoused young adults and adults on our streets, which will then impact safety, security, and well-being of our community. So I'm really, really, really hoping that council will take this seriously. We've pretty much been talking about housing affordability and eviction pre-pandemic, mid-pandemic, and now. So I hope this is a top priority for you and that the criticisms raised by the community members who went before me are taken seriously. And again, thank you, Mayor Farrell, for coming out on your Saturday. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Sai, I really appreciate it. And I, you know, it just broke my heart when I arrived in the parking lot and everybody was running to their cars. I'm like, no, don't go anywhere. But I don't think anybody was in danger of leaving, but I, there was no way we were going to leave them outside in the, in the cold and rain. So worked out, so I'm glad you could make it as well. Thank you so much.
Definitely, if there's a mayor's award for King County, your number one draft pick, only mayor to come on a weekend to take care of their people.
Thank you, Sai, I appreciate it. Okay. All right, Stephanie, any more public? All right, Stephanie, any more public comment?
No, Mayor, that's all we have.
You know, I actually just sent an email to Stephanie and Ryan. I would like in the future to call our public comment, public comment, not citizen comment. So I'll talk to Stephanie and Ryan about, and maybe we'll get it. I don't know if it's just something we can do by fiat or if it needs to go through council, but I think we should call our public comment period, public comment, not citizen comment. Because it's all encompassing. It's not just this, it's not just citizens, it's not just people who live here, it's public comment. So, and we'll talk about that later. Okay, now let's move on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through council committees. It can be passed all at once. After I run through them, I'll ask council members if they would want a separate item pulled for individual consideration. Okay, item five. Consent agenda, item A. Minutes for the September 10, 2020 special meeting. September 15, 2020, regular and special meetings. September 23, 2020, budget study session, and September 24, budget study session. Item B, master lease agreement with new singular wireless PSC LLC for small wireless facilities. Item C, Americans with Disability Act, the ADA Transition Plan Update. Item D, vouchers for August 2020. Item E, monthly financial report, August 2020. Item F, resolution amending the fund balance reserve policy. Item G, resolution authorizing staff to close and replace a compromised bank account. All right, council, are there any items that you would want pulled for separate consideration? Okay, seeing no request to do so, Council President Honda, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move approval of items A through G on the consent agenda.
Second, second.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion in at least three seconds. And is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Okay, council business. Item 6A, Senior Advisory Commissioner Appointment, alternate to voting. Councilmember Coach Moore, do you have a motion?
I move to appoint. My goodness, I just lost my. Give me, I'm so sorry. I moved to appoint Kenneth Pratt to the Senior Advisory Commission. Goodness. Technology, it's wonderful, isn't it?
When it works.
I moved to appoint, sometimes, Kenneth Pratt as a voting member of the Senior Advisory Commission for a term to expire August 31, 2023.
Second.
All right, there is a.
Thank you.
The motion and a second? All right, is there any discussion?
Um, yes.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Pratt recently interviewed, and the person, we had appointed three members as voting members, and one is an alternate. One of the members was not able to fulfill her term, and so we'd like to appoint Mr. Pratt as a voting member. He's been to, I believe, two meetings and is doing a great job.
Very good. Isn't it fun to get the senior commissioner really just going and doing great things? It's many years in the making and a lot of fun.
They're doing a lot of good work.
Yeah, they are, they are. Okay, and big thanks to Jerry Lynn for her staff work on that and for the council members working with that committee. It's a commission. It's very important. Okay, there's been a motion and a second and some discussion and some rambling by the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, best is unanimously. Item B, council discussion of ordinance comprehensive plan or rezone amendment for Shelter Resources. First, we'll have a staff report from Brian Davis, our Community Development Director. Brian? All right, Brian, can we hear? Can you hear us?
Jason's on his way over there.
It's been a difficult time tonight with technology.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, my video, my video's not working.
Brian?
Hey, all right, thank you.
If you uncheck the use presenter view, where it says monitor about the center, upper center of the screen, right above the thumbnail of your slide in the center of the screen. Yeah, use presenter view.
Gotcha.
Yep, and then now start your show.
Okay, all right, thank you. This layout totally switched on me. I apologize. I'm usually pretty Zoom proficient, but I'm showing, it's kind of throwing me for loop here. Sure. This is not.
So, open this up, just expand that guy. And go over here, expand this. And then you'll be able to reason slide. And then down. Are they, are they seeing the screen out there?
Okay, so are you seeing the slot, the slide?
Well, we see all three slides.
Yeah, they're saying this screen over here.
Yeah.
Do we have confirmation from them that it's up and running?
Yes.
But I think they still see the three slides.
Nope, nope, we see, just like it's supposed to be, Brian.
There we go. All right, yeah, now we're in business.
Okay. Apologies for the delay. So again, as I was talking to myself on mute, this is a comprehensive plan amendment and rezone that was presented to the Land Use and Transportation Commission and was forwarded to the city council for a discussion on council business. There was also a desire to have a brief discussion about the overall comprehensive plan or the planning outlook for housing in Federway. So I'm just going to briefly touch on that and then get into the, into the presentation. So this is some numbers on projected housing need in the future. So it's a 20-year projection, and we, as a city, need approximately 67 and 86,786 housing units to satisfy a demand on needed housing in our city. That would be about 339 units, new units, coming online each year. From an affordable perspective, that's 4,500 affordable units needed for the next 20 years, and that's 227 units each year. So that's, that's just kind of a big-picture numbers outlook for the number of units each year that we would need to bring online to meet the expected demand on housing. So 80% of our needed multifamily units are planned for mixed-use and business zones. So what that means, if we look at the comprehensive plan map, the purple zones represent the mixed-use and commercial areas of the city. So that's basically, if you go along Pack Highway and you start at the north at 272nd, and you go down to basically Kit's Corner, that corridor is mixed-use and business zones. On 320th, it's just east of Pack Highway, and then the darker purple is also a, it's the city center core, and that's also a mixed-use zone. Now, more particularly with the city center core is added density availability for new housing units. All the, the green and the light yellow is very low-density, single-family detached-type developments. The brown is multifamily, you know, medium multifamily development. But the purple and the dark purple are really where the density is being concentrated. And especially with the core, the height limitations are quite, it's quite a bit more free as far as height limitations goes when we're talking about developing housing, or really any type of building for that matter. It's a 200-foot restriction in the core, so pretty open, whereas the purple and everywhere else is generally around 35 feet or lower. So when we talk about available land, the actual dirt on the ground, there's not a lot in the city. But when we speak of land in terms of buildable area, then the vertical area, you know, if you have land on land, when you think of multiple stories, the concentration is being in the core. What we're going to talk about tonight is, if you can see my mouse, is this little piece right here, this little light-yellow piece right there that's surrounded by multifamily and mixed-use zone. This is a low-density zone, and the proposal is to change this from low-density to this brown multifamily housing, which we're recommending that the council approves. So that's a brief snapshot of the big-picture policy and vision for the city. And there's any questions about that? I can answer that now, or I can go into the zone change proposal. I will go to the zone change proposal then. Okay, so as I mentioned, here's specific.
Brian, I see Councilmember Moore has his hand. Okay. Councilmember Moore, do you have a quick question before we go to the, to the zone request?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Just for the record, I'm just going to recuse myself from this vote. That's coming up after the discussion takes place. I am a member of the board for the Multi-Service Center, so I just wanted to put that out there immediately. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Brian?
Okay. So this is the more close-up look at what we're talking about. This is the property here, just off of Pacific Highway. This is the Redondo Heights Park and Ride, just a block or two south of the 272nd intersection. And as I mentioned earlier, right now, it's a low-density, it's a single-family zone currently. It's surrounded by a commercial zone to the north and multifamily zone and business to the west and south. Lower-density zoning to the east, but there is a fairly significant grade separation from that. And there will be no connection vehicular or pedestrian otherwise from the subject property to the low-density area below. This is an aerial photo looking slightly north at an angle. This mentioned in some of the public comments, this is the Silver Shadow Apartments that was acquired by Shelter Resources. And then this is the property that we're talking about changing the zoning for. Again, it's low-density. We're talking about changing it to multifamily to match the surrounding uses. So as I mentioned earlier, this has gone to Planning Commission. They approved it, or they recommended approval. Unanimous vote, and the LUTC forwarded it to the city council for a discussion. From the, from a comprehensive plan standpoint, it does encourage more housing. It does encourage the opportunity for more affordable housing units, especially when it's close to transit areas, which this is. And also affordable housing projects where density, higher density allows it to take place. Land use policies related to compatibility, and this is a prime candidate for that. As I mentioned earlier, it's virtually surrounded by zoning and uses that we're proposing to change the subject property to. So it's very compatible with the surrounding area. So I already mentioned, it's adjacent to multifamily and mixed-use zones. It's surrounded by development already. It's adjacent to the current park and ride and within walking distance of the future light rail station. So really ideal for a multifamily housing project. So the options for the council are to approve the comp plan amendment and rezone or to deny the amendment, and the mayor recommends approval. I can answer any questions.
All right, council, are there any questions? Okay, Councilmember Coach Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, I I don't have any problems with the particular project. It makes perfect sense. But this is 600 units, is that correct?
Uh.
For this project?
So the project is, I believe it's 130 units is what they're proposing.
How many units are in Silver Shadows?
There are two. Let me see here. Just over 200. 120 range.
Yeah, okay, so 130. So Brian, when you're saying we, is it the county that is saying that we have to accept so many units per year? Or is it the state or who?
It's the, it's the, it's both. It's an easy way to say it.
Okay, so for the, all right, so the, so we're expected to accept 247 units per year or to somehow develop 247 units per year?
Well, we're not, yeah, we're not required to. That's just a target for us to shoot for. If we're, if we're to meet 20-year goals, then that's sort of the pace that we need to do.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Sure. So what I was recognizing was around the transit garage in the downtown core, that's a deep purple. And so how many housing units are you expecting to develop in that area? Have developed in that area?
Right, so there's not an exact number I can give you, but it's 80% of our multifamily units so are to be developed in those purple areas. It doesn't say specifically in the core, but the core just happens to be where the highest density is allowed. So it would, you know, it can be developed there, or it can be developed elsewhere at a less dense rate, whereas the core could and is planned to develop units at a higher rate, at a higher density, since there are shopping and living and parks and transit opportunities there.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm concerned about because it's large, shopping and, I mean, what kind of businesses are we going to be able to encourage there if it's all housing? I don't, I'm trying to get a feel for how much housing is going to be concentrated in that one area.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be all housing. One of the requirements for multifamily developments in the core especially is that the ground floors not be residential, that they maintain a business component or retail component to them. And it's not going to be all, we're not planning on it being, or the plan, excuse me, is not that it be 100% residential. It's just that that's where the highest density is allowed. So ideally, it'd be a mix of uses, not just residential that we're talking about.
So are we talking, how many units are we talking? For example, around the sound transit with sound transit, is it going to be three buildings, high-rise? What are we talking about?
Well, it, there's, there's no, there's policies in place that allow 200-foot buildings to be constructed, so.
I know they. I know they that that's that's quite a bit. That's high. Uh, the highest one we have right now is eight stories, eight floors. So that actually, isn't it about a hundred feet per story?
Uh, it it could range between, usually it's about uh, uh, thirteen to fifteen feet per story.
Okay, so um, so I'm just trying to get a feel, you know, what our what our density is going to be in our downtown. And I I what I would like to do is have a relook or a review or visit our comprehensive plan at some point and have input from our residents to our citizens to come and tell us what they want in their downtown. I I just need to get a I don't know where we're going with with all of the housing. I I just need to get a feel for that. I mean, I'm I'm quite fine with Shelter Resources and multi-service center. That that's fine. I'm just wondering where we're going with sound transit and what's going to be developed around there.
Okay, is that it?
So so it's that said, well, at some point, Mayor, could we have some kind of a discussion on this entire issue?
Of course, yes. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. I I don't want, what I don't, what I want us is to, thank you.
Good, no, go ahead. Councilmember Coachmore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I felt that we we as the need to know exactly what's going on in our community so that we can um, so that we can best lead our community. Uh, and so I just, I need to know where we're going because I don't have a clear vision at the at this moment. Uh, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Berusso.
Now, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Brian, for the uh, presentation, so. In support of M S C and Shelter Resources, um, I've I I look forward to doing this too and to uh, to make sure that this hopefully goes through. So I had a conversation with the superintendent today, and so I want to make sure that for the sake of consistency and transparency and efficiency here. Um, some of the concerns, I know that we've got emails about Redondo Heights, the uh, the project and the school impact fees. So from the school district's point of view, uh, the school district and the school impact fees and the fact that reading the the one email about this um, possibly I'll open this to or to waiving the portion, I think that's where the the school district has a want some questions answered and want some more information. Um, what I got from this superintendent that the plan hasn't been formalized yet and they wanted time to come back to talk about the school impact fees. And so although I'm I've support the project myself, um, I want to also respect the wishes of our district to make sure that whether it be capacity for the schools and the school impact fees that that ultimately the citizens will have to pay for, our residents have to pay for if it's passed on. I think we should have to take a look at that and maybe think about this. So I'm looking for also discussion and more comment from council members on this.
Yeah, real quickly, uh, Councilmember Bruce, I I wasn't quite sure if I understood you correctly, but there to my knowledge, there is no proposed waiver of the school impact fees for uh, this project. Now, if there are uh, portions of the project that are eligible for a, uh, you know, the 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 district and the city together to consider, you know, for example, if they're, uh, if they have age restrictions or, uh, you know, things like that, um, then they're in the past, we have consulted with the school district on getting their concurrence on on a reduction or waiver altogether. But for this project, I'm not aware of of any waiver that's being sought.
Okay, um, thank you, Brian. It's I don't know if it's it's sought at, but I guess it's been discussed. And it's also in the email from Mr. Matthew Chantry. If anyone from um, Shelter Resources wants to comment on that right now, that'd be great.
Well, I I think why don't we, uh, do Councilmember Berusso, do you have any other questions?
No, that's it. I just, I'm like I said, uh, Mayor, just I wanted to um, try to see if we can um, I don't know what to do with this in a way. I want to bring it out there to let you know that um, this is their concern. And in talking to them, it's it's formalization of that school impact fees, number one. And to make sure that they're they want to a more formalized plan brought to them. I don't know. I'm not saying it wasn't. I'm just saying this is what I was told today in the conversation.
Councilmember, are you talking about the district or the applicant? I'm I'm sorry for my confusion. Okay, yeah, yeah, we we are working with the district on um, looking at the school impact fees. That is something that is that is currently underway, but it's not something that is ready to present to council.
Okay. Yeah, just like I said, Brian, I just wanted to make sure that we want us aware. The school impact fees, if it if it's if it's waived or any portion, again, just make sure that we know that if if the developer doesn't cover it, then we're going to end up covering it through the residents, correct?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure. Thank you.
That but as you understand it, Brian, there's no there's no request to waive these fees?
Not not to my knowledge, no. If they if this is a housing project for you know, that's not age restricted or some other limitation that uh, this again, the school district, we would we consult the school district on those. We don't uh, unilaterally uh, decide on those. We consult with them to make sure that they're okay with it. And to my knowledge, there's not been uh, a, you know, we're talking about a zone change at this at this point, so technically we don't really know all the details of the proposal. So but what from what I have heard, I've I've not heard of of a a request or a design that would be conducive to a a a school impact fee waiver. And that could that could certainly change, but again, at this point, we're just talking about a zone change.
Right. Would that would that have to go before the council to waive that fee?
Uh, typically, no. Uh, again, if it's if it's a housing, like the senior project uh, downtown that's going up right now, it um, received either reduction or a full waiver. I can't remember uh, to the fees because there's not going to be any kids in it.
Got it. Okay. Okay, alright, uh, Councilmember Berusso, do you have any other?
No, no, Mayor, just again, just uh, just agreeing on that and making sure that uh, we keep them in the loop for number one, capacity, number two, school impact fees. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes. Will do. Okay, thank you. Council President Honda.
Thank you. Um, Brian, could we get a definition of what workforce housing means and then a definition of what affordable housing means?
Workforce housing is briefly, it's for people who work in the area to to live. Um, affordability is a little more complicated, uh, because it depends on the number of members in the family. Uh, the the number of it can, you know, depend on the number of 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 units. Um, but it it's a, it's an income level that is defined for each cohort um, to where they are considered below the the income level that is acceptable to maintain, you know, just your basic needs in life. Um, but it it varies depending on the situation.
So can you tell me that, can you talk about workforce housing again? What did you say?
So for
Isn't this, isn't this going to be workforce housing? Is this complex?
I so I I I'm I'm hesitant to get into the proposal too much because this is a zone change, um, and the and the development is not um, criteria for a zone change. Um, if if the applicant wants to get in and talk more about the details, if they're willing to, I I would kind of um, ask them to do so, but for as far as the criteria goes for this, I'm I'm um, a little hesitant to get into those details, um, just because the the criteria are pretty straightforward for uh, complant amendments and zone changes.
Okay. Council President, any other questions?
Um, yes, so at the L U T C meeting when this is discussed, the council, I believe all council members were there and we had a discussion on the housing plan that's coming to council. And I believe uh, Doc Hanson said it would be around the first of the year when we would get that housing plan. Is that still accurate or is it going to be sooner?
Uh, I think it might be later.
Later?
We are, yeah. Um, because this this is a um, that January is what, three months away, so uh, it could be January, um, but I I I anticipate that it might be a little bit later. Um, but it is, thank you for bringing that up, by the way, Council President. Um, so the Housing Action Plan for for information of the rest of the council is is uh, it was brought before the council some months ago to approve the grant funding for it, but it's to uh, provide the city um, a look at its housing and develop a a a plan of action uh, towards identifying the the housing needs uh, that we have and to work towards meeting those needs.
Okay, um, and school impact fees, uh, I get weekly emails from the Master Builders Association. And in a few weeks ago, I got one on uh, school impact fees. And the city, the King County Council has apparently already voted on school impact fees, which will take effect on January first, twenty twenty one. And federal way is listed. So what does that mean for us? Does it even come before our council or since King County Council has already apparently approved these?
So their approval would apply to uh, portions of the federal way school district that are unincorporated.
Okay.
Uh, this the city maintains the the school impact fees within city limits.
But that I'm I would think that whatever King County approved for unincorporated King County here in federal, you know, around the city of federal way, uh, this city of federal way would probably have the same impact fees? Or very close to the same?
Yeah, I I think it's just a a little different. Um, and again, I'm not the best expert to talk about school impact fees, but I think it is a little different just because the the facilities. It's based on facility needs and student, expected student enrollment. And the facilities in unincorporated are not the same facilities that are in the city limits, so it's a, my understanding is a little different. And I I believe um, I don't know if it was King County or the city of Kent, which also has um, uh, some some territory within uh, the federal way school district that they capped the proposal at a certain limit. I believe it was Kent, but I thought the county did as well, but I I could be mistaken. But we're we're working with the county or excuse me, with the school district right now to um, to to look at the fees again. They uh, released their numbers for the for the for this year based on the, you know, their five year methodology of history and demand. Uh, and we're going to be sitting down with them, I I believe it's next week actually, to go over a proposal um, that we that we want to talk to them about. But we, to your point, Council President Honda, um, you mentioned that you get emails. I I too get emails, so I I I know exactly what you're talking about in terms of the the fees and its impact to uh, potential developments.
So will we see that those impact fees uh, before the end of the year?
Yes, you you have to approve them.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Sepha Dossen.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brian. Um, I know this conversation is about um, zoning change, so I will keep my comment brief, brief. But in terms of the project that is at hand, I totally support it because I did live in that neighborhood. I lived in tax credit housing. I lived at Barclay Ridge. And had it not been for it being affordable and below market rate, I don't think you'd see me here today. I would not have been in federal way because for my family of four, that was the kind of place I could afford to live in. And so I really don't want um, I I know we're we're voting on zoning and I I want to go ahead and 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 um, support that idea, but I just also want to make sure that people understand um, that we do need these housings and that neighborhood again is all multifamily. Um, and it's right by the park and ride, so um, I don't I, yeah, I'm totally in support of it. People need it. We need um, workforce development housing. We need affordable housing in our community. And right now, when we're talking about sheltering at home, when we're talking when we're talking about um, the impact it has on children not being housed, um, is significant. Um, and I do constantly think about kids who don't have home to shelter in and currently who don't have homes to even do their homework and to sit at a desk at a table and work on their schoolwork. So it's very impactful and um, I do appreciate Greg, um, your comment about the school impact fee. But I believe uh, Robin had already said that she had a conversation with um, um, Dr. Campbell and that they uh, and I don't want him to speak, but it sounded like it sounded like they were in agreement, so um, just want to make sure that we understand the scope and the impact that it's going to have on people who who want to live in federal way and who need affordable housing. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Coachmore.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Or I I want to agree with uh, Councilmember Berusso and Council President Honda about having a discussion on the school impact fees. Uh, I'd like to know, you know, what we're dealing with at the moment. And one of the things I'm wondering about too with the schools is um, I'm wondering, after COVID is over, I'm really wondering what the population will be. I I think it's unfortunate what's going on right now, uh, but at any rate, uh, I I do think that we need to have a a discussion on on the fees. Anyway, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, um, let's see here. Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, Councilmember Berusso, do you have motion?
The city of Mayor, uh, I just wanted to make sure on the date we have here on it, it is the October twentieth.
The first reading, because this was Florida does business, so it'll be the first reading at the twentieth and then second reading at the following meeting.
Thank you. Alright. Okay, I move forward the proposed ordinance to the first reading at the October twentieth, twenty twenty regular council.
Second.
Alright, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Oh, sorry. Councilmember, Council President Honda?
I would just say that at that point when we uh, in two weeks, we will get more information if we need more information. And um, I know that the concerns that Councilmember Berusso has expressed with the schools, hopefully we will have more clarity on that at that point.
As part of the uh, of a presentation or um, if you could help me out, uh, you're you wanting a presentation before our first reading? Or separate, separate agenda item?
No, no, if council members have more questions, we always have the opportunity to ask those questions at that time.
Yeah.
I just wanted council members to know that this isn't
Yes.
the end of asking questions and getting information that we still have the opportunity to do that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, alright. Alright, anything else, council? Alright, uh, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I
I
I
Opposed? Alright, matter passes unanimously. Alright, item C.
Well, professional Mr. Mayor, and for the record
Oh, I'm sorry. There's yeah, the one recusal. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you very much, Councilmember. Okay, professional service agreement for cross analysis of architecture and engineering. A staff report from Brian Davis. And we're also going to hear from E J Walsh, who our Public Works Director and was the uh, project manager as well.
Okay, thank you.
And while you're getting that set up, um, why don't you get that, I want to talk to the council here real quick. Uh, Councilmembers Berusso, uh, Council President Honda, Councilmember Sepha Dossen, could you please remove your hands up? Um, that way, uh, when I see them, uh, after this presentation, there we go. The board is clear. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Oh, sorry.
Mayor, do, I'm so, can I ask the mayor a question? Do you want us to do that each time? Because in the past, we haven't had, uh, we haven't had to do that? Remove our hand or lower it?
Well, I I think actually, once you, uh, if you've raised your hand electronically and then are called on, I I would, to prevent confusion, I would uh, ask every council member to then lower their hand. Um, once their, once their question's done.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, okay. So, um, alright, Brian.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I um, I'm filling in for Sarah tonight, so this is a policy question is uh, yeah, can you not see it?
No.
Brian, we see the folder, uh, that's desktop, it has all the stuff in it.
Oh, screen.
Okay.
Better?
Yep. Okay.
Policy question. Very good. Now you're not seeing my sensitive file information. Okay, so this is a for council consideration, this is the policy question is to whether or not you should approve professional services agreement with Baker Tilly to conduct a cost analysis of the architecture and engineering for the previously completed construction of the PAC. So a little bit of history, so when we started with the, the planning and design of the PAC, we used a design build process, which is the same person or the same firm both designs the building and then builds the building. And we got our firm, we selected our firm through the, the state procurement requirements that we always follow. Midway through the design, we changed the process to a design bid build. That's where one person designs it and then we put it out to bid for either the same person or someone else to, to build it. We retained a large portion of the design that we developed through the design build process. And so when, at that time, we wanted to keep a portion of the design and we conducted an analysis and determined that it'll be more expensive to, to start, to start the design over. And so the analysis led to retaining some of the firms for architecture and engineering. As you, as you are well aware, the, the funding of the PAC was used by a number of different sources. One of which was a Section 108 loan through HUD, which we were awarded in 2015 in the amount of $3 million, $30,000 for the PAC. We are completing a cost analysis, determine what, that the, the architecture and engineering costs were reasonable because in an audit, it was, it was, there was a finding by HUD that we need to go back and just verify that the the process that we did to retain those services were reasonable. The, the procurement was completed.
I should clarify, I should clarify that, just to make sure it's clear, that when we did that, we didn't have the federal HUD dollars. Later, we got the federal HUD dollars that has different requirements. And so long after we made that decision, then we got federal money from HUD, not, not just state money. So go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so procurement was completed in accordance with state law. But when the federal funding came into play, as the mayor mentioned, that introduced new regulations which we then needed to follow. And we did use a competitive request for proposal to select the consultant for this proposed analysis, which we found in Baker Tilly. Proposed professional services is in the amount of $33,850, which includes scoping, data collection, data analysis, and presentation of the findings. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let's actually kick it over to EJ real quick. EJ, can you talk about how we, thank you, Brian. Can you talk about how we got here and what, you know, what you're, you know, I should let everybody know that EJ, once he started with the city, before he was Public Works Director and was fairly recent at the city, I put him in charge of the PAC project. The idea was get the project done on time and on budget or under budget, which we did. But, and EJ, can you explain your knowledge of, of how we got here and, and what this is about?
Sure. So this happened before I started with the city, what Brian talked about, and it's before Brian was with the city as well. So the original process for this project, like Brian brought up, was design build. And we went out through a competitive process and we seeked proposals from teams of firms and awarded it after that competitive process to Lorax Partners was the lead. And they brought in Element Architects as the primary architect, which is a frankly, a world renowned architecture firm out of Seattle that specializes in high-end hotels, the gaming industry and performing and event centers. So fit right in with us. Lorax was set to work under a GCCM contract, meaning that they would oversee construction of it on the city's behalf. And that, you know, it would be a turnkey project to the city. As the project progressed, a decision was made to switch the project delivery method from that design bid to a design bid build, which is what Brian talked about in his presentation. The key part of this of what HUD is asking us to do is at the state level, the professional services contracts, price is not a factor. So for architects, engineers, accountants, any sort of professional services, attorneys falls in that. You base the award based on qualifications and you award it to the most qualified firm and then you negotiate scope and price. That's the way state law is set up. For federal, that's not the case. So for federal projects or projects that have federal funding, price is a factor for professional services. So that's the fundamental disconnect. So what HUD has asked us to do in, in retrospect is basically go back and confirm, and that's what Baker Tilly's being asked to do. Go back and confirm essentially the, the staff analysis that Brian talked about. So go back and confirm that what we did was in fact, in the best interest of spending tax money. And that we that we would not, it would not have been more advantageous to essentially hit the reset button and rebid the work. So what the city did was when we switched from design build to design bid build, we entered into a direct contract with Element Architects. It was done the majority of the design work at that point and had them finish it. So that is at a very high level what Baker Tilly is being asked to do in accordance with the request from HUD. So this, this is a, you know, a exercise in going back and, and showing that we, we acted proficiently and in the best interest of our taxpayers. Like the mayor said, you know, and, and like I've said publicly before as well, the project came in on time, it came in under budget. Neither would have happened if we hit that reset button, frankly. We would have lost several years worth of work and several million dollars worth of fees. So I think that this will be a very procedural review of the project. But, you know, we, we owe it to HUD to go through and, and do what they're requesting. So that is, that is the purpose of this.
All right, Council President Honda.
Thank you. I certainly expect that the costs will be the same, that, you know, the analysis will be what we need it to be. But if it isn't, is there a penalty that we would pay or what is, what would be the next step that HUD would do? Or would request the city to do?
Considering the fact that this is now, the, the PAC has been completed and built on an open three years ago. Now, I, yeah, I, it's pretty ridiculous we're going through this entire process, but considering all of that, but
Yeah, there, so there, there would be, they'd take a look at it and see if it was somehow failed to be reasonable. And if so, then we would, there would be a a process that would cost the city, but based on the analysis that was done before, the cost of that, and we really want to kind of call it a penalty, but the, the cost of that was determined to be far less than the process that we took to basically keep the same bidder or the, the same firm that we had on board, which went through appropriate means to procure. So to answer your question, yes, there could be an issue, but we don't think it'll be of a magnitude that will exceed the, the cost that we saved by going through the process that we did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Sephardoson. Oh.
One more question?
Yeah.
Do you know how long this whole process will take from when the firm starts their, their work to when they finish?
I, I, I don't know that. I can, we can, we can get that information. I don't anticipate it'll be terribly long.
Okay, thanks.
Brian, do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, if you, yeah.
Yeah, so Sarah and I did a scoping, Sarah Bridgford and I did a scoping meeting with them last week just to basically start the scope and fee conversation to get to the point of having this presentation through the council tonight. And they were, their expectation is early 2021, they would have it to us. So January, February timeframe.
Any questions? Okay, Councilmember Sephardoson.
Yeah, my question is, this is the Section 108 CDBG known, correct, or funding?
Yes.
So if there's any kind of penalty, does that mean they're going to be withholding what we would be getting? Or how does this work? Because it's actually, we're paying back what we're getting from them in a way, you know, essentially. So how would that work or what does that look like?
Yeah, so it could be either a, a, a number of different potential options. One is that they say, don't, don't use it anymore, or it could be as drastic as, you know, you need to re, you need to repay some. But again, it's likely that whatever, based on the analysis that, that we have, it's not going to be first of all, we, we believe that it will, that we will, that they'll come back and say, yes, this is, this is fine. We just need it to, to check a box, basically. But if they do find that there is an issue that they, the financial result to the city is, is not going to be of, again, it's not going to outweigh the savings that we did by going through this process.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Let's see here. Councilmember Tran, you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the proposed agreement and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. Second.
Been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. All right. Item D, agreement with El Centro de la Raza for COVID-19 rental assistance. Brian Davis.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. These next two items, while I'm getting ready, are a see, we're done with that one, and we need to go to okay. Going to, these are CARES Act reimbursement proposals. So these next two are related to that. The first one is dealing with rent assistance and working with our partner, El Centro de la Raza. And I believe we, we are, we, we should be honored to have on the line with us the executive director, Estela Ortega, to answer any questions if you have any. But this is to help with rental assistance in better way and work through El Centro de la Raza. And that's a policy question approving the agreement with El Centro de la Raza for rental assistance response to COVID-19 to be funded with CARES Act. So just some a little bit of data now, presentation for the situation, the current situation. It's estimated that between 5% and 10% of, of Washington tenants have not paid full rent since the state home order was enacted in, well, it was in March, but the first full month was in April. So there's, there's a, for Federal Way, that there's a potential of, of having between 800 and 1600 households behind rent. So it's no small amount. And so that translates into anywhere from 5 to 10 million in past due rent. The eviction moratorium expires this month and housing stability is, is a very important it's an important part of dealing with the COVID-19 crisis because there's increased potential for a spread of the virus in shelters. With houses, households that are double up, shelters typically have a higher, you know, more proximity to each other when there's, you know, there's not housing provided. And the scope of long-term impacts on the financial and housing stability may also increase for those that are behind on rent and that impact, that impacts our ability as an economy to recover. So recommendation is to provide $500,000 to El Centro de la Raza to provide rent assistance to low and moderate income households impacted by COVID-19. El Centro is prepared. They're a good partner and they're prepared to quickly expand their rent assistance using a mix of, of of access modes. And it will be available, the rent assistance will be available through November 10th, providing that we don't run out of money or they have an exhausted funds before then. And so that is the presentation. I have to answer any questions as well as I hope Estela Ortega is available on the phone as well if the council has any questions.
Yes, I am here.
Welcome, Estela. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I beg your pardon?
Would you like to say a few words?
Oh, yes, I, let me, yes, definitely. I just want to just refresh the council's memory about El Centro de la Raza. We obviously have been in existence since 1972 and have, you know, 43 different programs. And we purchased a building and opened up services in January of this year and have been operating. We currently have a small contract with the city of Federal Way to provide after-school services to Totum Middle School. We also have an open door program specifically in terms of having young people come back to school and, and, you know, get their high school diploma. The dollars will be utilized, the full amount, the $500,000 will be utilized to provide direct services. We are not paying, utilizing the dollars for staffing nor indirect administrative rate because we feel in these hard times that any money of this nature should be going to help people. We certainly have experience in providing rental assistance so far in terms of providing rental assistance to over 800 households starting since the middle of March to Seattle residents and South County residents also. So, you know, we're set up, you know, to process people. That we will, we do all of this by phone because we limit the contact that, you know, our staff have and, you know, obviously also to protect the participants. And, you know, there's some challenges, but it does, does work in terms of handling all of this through the phone, people's smartphones, texting us information that we need. We process with an intake application that obviously asks people, you know, their information, how many are in their household, why do they need rental assistance? And the checks are also made out directly to the landlord and, and not to individuals. So I think that's the summary. And then the way that we will let people know that these funds are, are available obviously is through social media, through you know, the Federal Way Chamber of Commerce in terms of helping promote it. We would approach the Federal Way Mirror and then we also, El Centro has a weekly radio program and would look at also some Latino newspapers to let people know in the Latino community also that these funds are available. So any, any questions?
All right. Counsel, any questions? I see Councilmember Sephardoson and Council President Honda. Are any of your questions geared toward Estela? Yes, okay, Council President Honda.
Thank you. It's always good to hear, hear from you, Estela. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
And so one of my questions was, how would we get the word out that this program existed? And you've answered that. I would also expect that the city would have it on our social media sites? And anything else that we can do as a city to get the word out that, that this is available? Will this only be available for Federal Way residents?
Yes, it's absolutely because the dollars obviously were awarded to the Federal Way. And so we're very cognizant, you know, of that and will adhere to, to that and providing services only to Federal Way residents.
And then my other two questions are how soon will this be available and can it be used only once per household? And how much per household? How much would each household be able to receive?
The fact that it's a short period of time, you know, from October, my understanding- my understanding and talking with Sarah is that, you know, the monies would hopefully be available October the 7th and go, go through November the 10th. And so $500,000 is a lot of money to spend in, you know, basically a five, about a five-week period. And so what we, what I was thinking is that, and people owe a lot of back rent, you know? They've, you know, been with this challenge since, you know, the middle of March. And, you know, the 800 families that El Centro helped, you know, the demand was so great and, you know, obviously money was coming in the door to help people with rental assistance. But because the demand was so great, we were only providing $500 to households. And so here's an opportunity with, you know, $500,000 that has to be spent in five weeks that we thought we would dedicate as much as $3,000 a household. And that would spend, that would, I don't have those calculations in front of my head right now, but it was about 150 or so families that could be helped with this. And that's El Centro pulling staff from different, you know, different departments and area to help on this. Because again, the challenge is that it's five weeks. And I'm not sure, I think you had one other question that I, is slipping my mind right now in terms of how much could be allocated. And I think there was one other.
I asked how much could be used per household and when would it be available? So you answered both of those. And I would just want, want to say thank you very much. We have a need, we want to keep people in their homes. And I appreciate that, that you will be able to do this and help us out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Honda, I appreciate those words.
Okay, Councilmember Asafad Ossan.
Yeah. Hi, Estela, this is Lydia and thank you for what you're doing. Actually, I do have a question for you now. And I'm sorry, I guess shortly after you opened here in Federal Way that COVID happened. So we're not even able to stop by and say hi, but at some point, I'm sure we will. So my question for you, actually initially I didn't have one, but now I'm thinking about the families that are being helped. I know. How do we know, especially if the moratorium continues? How do we know that they're not going to continue needing help? After, you know, like you do the 3,000 and then they're still behind more? Or they go further, get further behind as time lapses? What do we do or how do we deal with that? Do you have any plans for those families?
Well, you know, that's a tough question, you know, that obviously depends on the economy and, you know, opening up and people being able to get jobs. And a lot of these households don't have employment. And the work that we have been doing is not just, you know, giving a $500 check in our experience with those 800 other households, is that we call the landlords and say, you know, this is, you know, the good effort on the part of your tenant to do this and to remind them, you know, of the eviction moratorium so that, you know, we're all on the same, same page about that. You know, there, there is sort of a movement that, you know, people are asking, are there's, there's advocacy work about, you know, I guess, you know, getting rid of the debt, if you will, and kind of starting all over. And I don't know where that's going to go, but I think as long as, you know, we have COVID, there is definitely going to be those challenges. And I think that, you know, within Seattle with, you know, foundations and corporations and government, there has obviously been a commitment to try to help people so that we don't have more homeless people on the streets. And so it's sort of like, you know, a moving issue because, you know, COVID is, is right there, you know?
Okay, and then, thank you so much, though, I do appreciate that. Mayor, I know, is Multi Service Center another organization that does have this fund or anybody else?
Brian?
Yeah, Multi Service Center was, I'm sorry, what was the?
I'm just asking, the CARES Act, the CARES Fund for rental assistance, is El Centro the only organization or is Multi Service another one that does have those funds?
I think it's primarily El Centro.
Yeah, for this proposal, it's El Centro.
Okay. And the previous one, I think, Multi Service?
It was, I think there was just a staffing issue. I think they just, in order to get, this is a, this is a large amount of money to get out. And El Centro was ready, you know, ready to help us deploy these funds.
Okay, so this is the only organization that we're working with currently?
For this round of funding.
For this round of funding, okay.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Councilor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Estela, I just want to say thank you for, you know, bringing this money into Federal Way. I would like to suggest that, you know, you only have five weeks to spend this much money. Perhaps your office could reach out to a local DSHS office here because we, we serve roughly about 16,000 residents in this city. So we can, you know, we can promote this CARE Act money. And, you know, we can go from there. The other thing that I would like to suggest, the other thing that I would like to suggest is maybe instead of giving the money directly to the household, is there a way we can pay directly to the landlord or the apartment manager? Because, you know, our experience is that sometime, you know, when we give the money directly to, to the family, they have some other needs that they spend on those needs instead of, you know, paying for their housing costs. So that's, that's my suggestion.
And that's what we already do. We do not give, you know, these kind of rental assistance money directly to the household. It goes directly to the landlord.
Great.
So we're on the same page there, so I appreciate you and thank you for your kind comment.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, Council President Honda, you say, did you want to speak again?
Yes, I do. I know I've talked with Sarah about this, but I don't think I've asked her this specific question. I know when COVID started, the crisis started, people who were having issues with paying their rent were encouraged to pay as much of their rent as they could instead of waiting, you know, for the. Do we know in Federal Way the statistics of how many people have been affected by, by this and how many have not paid any rent? Or how many have, what percentage of folks have paid some, some of their rent? Because, you know, if we were to give 150 households $3,000, I think is what you said, that could be only two months' rent or if they haven't paid anything. I mean, that's, they would still be an issue, so.
Yes. So President Honda, what we have seen is that, you know, again, with our experience of those 800 households, helping them with $500, people know that that debt is not going away. And so they are borrowing money from, you know, family, friends, and they are making payments toward their rent. Because, I mean, everyone wants, you know, these, most of these are families and, you know, they, they know they need to keep their, their families housed. And so there has been, what we've seen in our experience, that ongoing commitment. People are not just like, okay, like I got $500 from El Centro and I'm gonna, you know, not pay anything to the landlord. That's not what we're seeing. People are figuring out, you know, you know, and paying small portions of their rent ongoingly.
Okay. Okay, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, not a question, but Estela, it's good to have you here. And thank you, absolutely, you're welcome. And thanks for all that you're doing. I'm looking forward to supporting this. This clearly is, is a time where the community just needs to continue to come together and meet the challenges that we're faced with. So thank you for your advocacy, thank you for your work and, and it's just so good to have you guys here in Federal Way. Thank you.
Well, thank you too and thank you to all the council for your consideration of this proposal.
All right, thank you, Estela. Councilmember Tran, I see your hand is still up. Did you want to say another word?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I forgot to lower my hand.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
We should do some lessons on that, Mr. Mayor.
Exactly, exactly, okay. All right, Council President Honda, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move approval of the proposed agreement and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement.
Second. Second.
All right. So there's been a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the matter passed unanimously. Estela, thank you very much, Brian, thank you very much, and counsel, thank you very much. This is going to really help our community. Okay.
Yes, it is, and thank you so much, council members. I'm going to hang up now, thank you again.
All right, thanks, Estela, take care. Thanks for your service. Okay, now we move on to item E, CARES Act Child Care Provider Assistance Grant. Oh, and by, by the way, Council President Honda, we're going to get this message out far and wide about the assistance that we're getting. So we're going to get this, you know, I've asked our Tyler, our communications coordinator to get this out to the Mirror, to get this out, you know, but this one and the next item, you know, depending on which way it goes, to get the message out wide and far about the generous moves that the council is making. Okay, item E, CARES Act Child, Child Care Provider Assistance Grants. Brian Davis.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So the last item and this item, the reason that we're talking about them in council meeting, I forgot to mention, is because of the timing, we didn't have an opportunity to go through committee. So normally these would be discussed at the committee. So I appreciate the council's willingness to, to take these through on a, on a quick path so we can get the, these funds to where they're needed most. So this second item on the CARES Act is for Child Care Provider Assistance Grant. That's the policy question, is should we authorize, basically, the CARES Act to provide funding to child care provider assistance? So we've seen with COVID and measures to slow its spread, it's resulted in about 40% of Washington childcare centers to close temporarily. And this is, this is a big impact to, to, to Washingtonians is, is when, when childcare closes, it affects, it has far-reaching effects. So centers that are open are operating at a lower capacity because of, you know, social distancing requirements. Childcare is significant to the economy, as I mentioned before. It helps parents participate in the workforce and contribute to the economy. The access to quality, affordable childcare is essential for families, especially those with low and moderate income levels. It's even more of a, of a, of an essential service for them. And those that qualify, or those that fall into that category have more barriers in accessing quality, affordable childcare. Virtual learning, in addition, also creates a gap for families, especially those in need of childcare. So the short-term solutions proposed with this funding package is to provide childcare subsidies for families that qualify for working connections. And that means families that are, that have incomes between 204% above the poverty level and then pay co-pays for working connections and provide grants to childcare providers. As I mentioned before, we're on a tight timeframe and we need to have these funds expended by next, the middle of next month. At all options needing new program development, the recommendation is to provide childcare provider grants of up to 15,000 per provider with a total of 200,000, with a total of 200,000 available. These grants may have a broader impact and may assist childcare providers in staying open by mitigating the financial impact of COVID-19. And these would be on a reimbursement basis. Due to the recommended size, it'll require receipts and verification. This is, this is basically to keep childcare service providers open. This is, this is a, both a, 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 a package to help them, but it's also economic development. Because without childcare service providers, as I mentioned before, it'd have tremendous impact. So to keep them operating and functional is essential for our, our citizens, our residents. So eligibility underway. You have to have a business license and be in business for at least one year prior to 2020, be current on all your taxes and fees, be licensed, be open. Businesses that receive grants through the, through the city or through other sources are, are still eligible. And, you know, if, if the request succeed funding, then priority will be given to those providers that accept working connections. Repeat it again, we're on a tight timeline. So the, the applications will open as soon as you approve this tomorrow with first awards on the 16th and applications closing on the 23rd. And will be available through November 16th for disbursement. And with that, I will answer any questions.
And Council President Honda?
Thank you. So I, you know, childcare has been something I've been talking about for a long time and I'm grateful that we're putting this, this money into this. But I am really concerned about the timeline and the ability to get this money spent and out to the people who need it. If we are not able to use all of the funds for childcare, if, when the grants, when the application closes on October 23rd, if we find that we don't have enough applications to use up this funding, could we then put the funding into rent assistance? Or how would that work? You know, I'm hoping that we can use it for childcare. I, believe me, I, I'm really concerned about parents who need childcare, who, childcare is expensive, it's like a mortgage payment, you know, it's really expensive. But I don't want the funds to go unused. So I'm, I'm concerned about the timeline here.
Yes, it's, as I mentioned, we're trying to get this through. It is a tight timeline. We will have to evaluate as we get closer to the deadline to see where we're headed. If we, if we feel that we're, we're not going to get there, then we, we may need to reassess and re, reallocate to, to another worthy cause. But hopefully, like you said, we won't have any trouble with this, with expending all the funds for this purpose.
And it's bigger chunks than we have been doing. It's about seven times what, what we're doing per individual grant for the CARES Act, phases one and two. These are $15,000 chunks. So hopefully it'll go, it'll go faster. We just want to get to, you know, as many of these businesses as we can. So, yeah, it should go a little, a little faster, $15,000 chunks. Would you agree to that assessment?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay, go ahead, Susan.
So this is going to the providers who then are helping parents by staying open and providing their services, so.
In $15,000 chunks? It's a lot of money. For the businesses, Brian, is that your understanding?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the other way around. It's, it's, and I think that's actually, that's exact, I had the same reaction you had when I first heard about this when I was thirst contemplating this. Council President and counsel, it would be way too time-consuming, in our opinion, to do the other end and to do individual, you know, sort of solicit people and, and. and, 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 you know, bring out people that need assistance for childcare. That outreach would be very difficult. However, the number of childcare facilities easily identifiable, we'll reach out to them and give them fifteen thousand dollar chunks uh, for the use of this money.
And then they turn around and
Let's talk about that.
Give that to the parents?
Let, let's talk about that. Brian, can you explain how that, what the functionality of that is?
Right, so this is to, this is to help them uh, stay open and, and then to help those, it's, is, is to provide them funding to stay open as a business, uh, but then also give priority for those that are under the uh, under the programs that would make them uh, most eligible. But the, the, primarily, we want these, these businesses to stay open, because once they're closed, it's a lot more difficult to, you know, once um, childcare becomes uh, more um, needed, it, it's a lot more harder to, to start a business all over again. So we just want to keep them up and running uh, to, to help with the, with the situation.
So then the childcare provider can use this money to pay bills to keep the business open, but not necessarily provide assistance to families who need the assistance to pay for childcare. Is that correct?
It, it's primarily to keep the businesses open, yes. So that when we can provide more, um, you know, when, when social distancing decre- decreases or whatever, that, that with those businesses are available for, for childcare.
But Brian, do you know wh- whether there is some um, expectation on our part that they're going to be helping out, uh, you know, those, those folks in need?
Yes, that's, I mean, that's part of it as well.
So it's both?
Yes.
So is there anything? So how, how would we know that a provider is offering assistance to families? Would we know that?
Yeah, so when the application comes, we would have, we would review that and uh, you know, determine what, uh, you know, make the decision at that point based on their application. And then as it, as the process goes along, we would uh, evaluate their, you know, their, their provision of services.
Um, can I ask a question of Councilmember Tran?
Yeah.
Um, Councilmember Tran, in um, your work, do you provide assistance for families who need childcare?
Uh, we used to, but now that uh, the part, department uh, basically spin off into a standalone uh, department. Uh, but we used to uh, be the one that provide uh, working connection childcare. Um, but now that agency is our sister agency, so if you need more information, I can always reach out to them to get more information for you.
Oh, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Tran, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I mean, my wife works there, children, youth and services. Is that right, Councilmember Tran?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Safadoss, and then Councilmember Berusso.
Yeah, I think um, Council President Susan asked my question. Um, but for clarity, um, if the service provider wants to support the childcare recipient, right, then they can use that money for that also, right? It's not just for operation, it could also subsidize the families that need it, correct?
Y- y- yes, but it's primarily for, it's intended to keep the, them open. That's the primary reason. Yeah.
So as part of that, it could be, you know, helping the families that utilize it. Um, okay, thank you. That was my question, but, but also Councilmember Tran, um, the families that do get childcare assistance are those who are already in a program that DSA just provides, provides, correct? They can't just come, let's say I'm working, but I'm, I'm, I don't have enough money. I can't, I won't qualify for childcare services, would I?
Well, if they are, um, um, how should I say this? If that income level uh, below our standard, that, then they are qualified to receive working connection childcare.
So they don't have to be in training, or they don't have to be in other, receiving other services? They can just get childcare? Right?
Um, yes, simply put it, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, Councilmember Berusso.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Brian, just real quick on the eligibility, um, is there a restriction at all, or anything on the licensed childcare provider size? Uh, is it, you know, what I'm saying is a larger one versus a one that comes out of the house that has four employees or three employees that
No, there's not a size requirement. And, and we talk about fifteen thousand for each. I mean, that's the, that's what we're, we're capping it at. So each one may, you know, depending on the application, may qualify for that max or uh, you know, a reduced amount, depending on their operational needs. But the, but the, the, the primary cri- uh, criteria is, is what I mentioned earlier about, you know, being in Federway, having a license, um, that sort of thing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I know there are some folks that, you know, around uh, some of the neighborhoods that run a licensed daycare out of their homes, where they may have four people or three people that for twenty, you know, or so like that. So I just wanted to make sure that eligibility reached them too, so.
Yeah, if they, if they meet those criteria, then they would qualify, yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Brian, I, I do have a, a question. I'm a little bit confused on the um, one of the slide that you show uh, between two hundred and four hundred percent of the FPL. If this grant is targeted for the childcare providers, why do we have that standard there?
So when they would apply, they would indicate if they serve those, 'cause there's a, there's a, the funding assistance needed from um, to, to help those. So if they, if they allow or provide for those that fall into that category, um, then they, they get, they get priority, basically.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let's see here. Council President Honda, do you have a motion?
I move to authorize the expenditure of two hundred thousand dollars for childcare provider grants as recommended by staff, and I direct staff to take these steps necessary to procure reimbursement through the state for COVID-19-related expenditures.
Second. Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I do actually have, oh, go ahead.
Council President Honda?
Um, once again, how are we gonna get the word out? And we have a short time, so is this gonna be in the newspaper? Is it gonna be on TV? How?
Yep. Well, yes, uh, we're gonna do everything we can to get that word out. I was just communicating with Tyler earlier this evening about doing exactly that.
So, um, I, I have a suggestion. I don't know. Sometimes you don't like my suggestions.
Always.
Uh, we have, we, you know, we have the big signs that we can put by the road. I, I'm thinking outside the box here. We have a very limited time to get the word out about these, both the rent assistance and this childcare assistance. So I'm just thinking, if there's something we could put on the signs that would get, you know, need help, you know, contact the city if you need help with rent or whatever, childcare. Just thinking outside the box.
And actually, as these are, you know, the, the item that um, uh, the item that, that you were about to vote on, um, uh, as this is directed toward a particular universe of businesses, we should be able to pull those businesses up and send them a group email and reach out to them. Um, you know, there's, you know, we should probably know every one of the childcare locations in Federway sent out a blast email um, and solicit their involvement. That, that's for that. And then for rental assistance, um, making sure, and actually, that's gonna be monitored through, administered through El Centro de la Raza, but, but same uh, concept as well. So we'll get that message out. But for here, we need to reach out directly to the childcare provider, so we'll do that.
Man.
Well, yes.
Mayor, may I, uh, thank you, sir. Uh, may I suggest that we can reach out to DCYF? Uh, because DCYF have the list of licensed childcare providers in the city of Federway. So we can just switch out to them and, and they, they give us a list.
Okay, DCYF.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that sounds good. List of childcare. Uh, actually, uh, I'm, I'm pointing to Bill right now, you guys. Bill, let's do that, uh, let's do that first thing tomorrow morning. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, um, uh, Greg, uh, Councilmember Berusso, I see your hand is still up. Did you have a question?
Oh, Mayor, I just forgot to lower it down. Sorry.
I'm down the deduction from your check.
I need a ruler. Exactly, okay.
The grease time.
Exactly, okay, all right. Um, all right, there's been a motion. There's been a second. There's been a great discussion. Um, and some great suggestions, uh, Council President, so thank you. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter passed unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Um, now it's on us to get this money out. Um, okay, um, discussion of HB fifteen ninety related to the imposition of a local sales tax to fund affordable housing and the needs of other special needs populations. Um, Brian, why don't we have you do a, um, a, uh, a brief staff report?
Okay, I will now share my screen. It won't let you unmute after you share your screen. Okay, thank you for your patience. So this presentation uh, is on House Bill fifteen ninety. Um, fifteen, House Bill fifteen ninety was passed this year, provides that the county may impose a sales tax of one-tenth of one percent to fund affordable housing projects. Uh, that same authority is, can be extended to cities if they uh, do likewise, they implement the tax, uh, but they have to do so before King County. For us, in Federway, one-tenth of one percent would be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. The projects and services that can be funded by a sales tax authorized through House Bill fifteen ninety um, are as follows. A minimum of sixty percent has to be used for uh, construction of affordable housing, construction of mental health uh, facilities, uh, supporting the operation and maintenance of affordable housing projects and also facilities where housing-related programs are provided. Um, 'cause uh, the construction of evaluation treatment centers. And then the remaining forty percent can be used uh, for a, a broader uh, operation delivery evaluation of mental health, behavioral health treatment programs and uh, housing-related services. So those are the eligible targets of this, of this uh, of this tax. Uh, and again, those who are, will be ultimately served by uh, such services provided by this funding um, uh, option are facilities and programs funded through, uh, excuse me, those who are, whose income are below sixty percent of the area uh, median income. So the next steps, um, there, there is, technically through the House bill, there is a, uh, a county or a city may submit a proposition to the voters, um, or they can impose this, this action uh, council mandate, meaning that it's just by a, a council member bringing it up uh, for vote without, uh, a council vote without uh, the voters. So, King County Council is considering the tax on their uh, Committee of the Whole Agenda, which uh, was today. If it moves out of committee, then the County Council will take action as early as October thirteenth. So this slide was made before the uh, Committee of the Whole Meeting finished. I, I called the county and talked to their staff. This did move out of committee, and it is moving to their October thirteenth full council meeting agenda uh, on October thirteenth. So if King County does impose a full tax rate, which it appears that they are headed in that direction, uh, but does so after a city has imposed a tax, then the county must provide the credit against the tax uh, for the uh, full amount of the tax imposed by that city. Uh, and then any city that enacts a tax would then have control over that tax revenue uh, for use within the city. But at the same time, county, the county could still use whatever funds that it receives through the tax revenue um, in any part of the county, including the cities that may have uh, preempted them on this measure. So uh, it is our understanding um, that the cities of Covington, Kent, Renton, and Issaquah are all considering a city enacted tax which would preempt King County from receiving the tax revenue generated in those cities, uh, which would mean the cities would then uh, retain control of those funds. The options for the council, um, because of the tight timeline that we're now aware of with the County Council meeting next Tuesday, is to direct staff to schedule a special meeting for the City Council to be presented in ordinance implementing the local sales tax again, before next Tuesday, or to take no action. Uh, if we do take no action and it moves forward at the county, uh, then the likely outcome would be uh, an additional uh, one-tenth of one percent sales tax throughout the county, including Federway, that would then go to the county for uh, those, those projects and uh, targets that I identified earlier. And the mayor's recommendation is to take no action, um, uh, primarily because of the condition, economic condition right now. Uh, the mayor recommends no action uh, in support of the um, the businesses, which, you know, we've discussed many times tonight through various um, uh, agenda items that I presented, uh, that the economic uh, situation for businesses is uh, not, is a not, not a strong one, and the mayor does not support any um, additional burden to them uh, through this action. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, you could say, you know, a once-in-a-century uh, global pandemic, um, in which we have, in which GDP for the nation has sharply dropped and businesses all over the nation and region and state have been closed. Yeah, I, I think, uh, well, that, that's why when I was on a conference call, let me do, give you some background, Council. Um, so on a conference call with um, Sound Cities Associations, uh, may, for the members, or members of the public that are watching, Sound Cities are the thirty-seven cities in King County that represent a million people outside of Seattle. And uh, you know, of course, this, uh, this was a part of a Dow Constantine uh, effort that was just launched um, without any kind of, of notice to the cities that they were gonna do this. And this is in conjunction and outside of um, the whole process for the homelessness authority that um, that they set up uh, uh, a year ago, where they said they weren't gonna be getting any more funding for um, for uh, homeless um, services. So outside of that entire process, he now proposes a uh, uh, to utilize fifteen ninety, which was authorized by the legislature this year to um, raise sales tax in the midst of a global pandemic. Um, so I, I just, you know, there, there was a lot of discussion. I just wanted, I wanted to just get it down to the, to just get down to brass tacks here. There was discussion among the SCA mayors of, well, King County is going to do it, and we might, if King County definitely has, you know, has the votes, which they think that at a six, they, they believe they have got at least six members of the King, King County Council to support this. We might as well do it before and preempt King County before they do it. And um, my statement at that time was, um, well, simply because King County is going to impose a tax doesn't necessarily mean we should. Um, but I think those cities that are listed there, uh, which are, are Renton, um, Renton, Kent, I, I actually, uh, Renton, Kent, Covington, and Issaquah um, are moving to preempt. Obviously, that didn't make the Executive's Office very happy, and my understanding is some, um, uh, there were some consternation at the county level, but that's neither here nor there. So Council, I wanted, the most important thing I wanted to do is make sure, I, I communicated all this um, as soon as I found out about it to the Council President and forwarded her um, this, this information, and then we got it on the agenda. So you would at least have this opportunity to discuss this. With that, I'll open the floor. Councilmore and then Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember Safa Dawson. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, so just a few clarifying questions and, um, um, Brian, um, or whoever presented, I think it was you, Brian, um, and Mayor, actually. 1590 was, uh, was introduced last year. Just for the record, uh, how did Representative Johnson vote on this? Do we know?
I don't know.
Or how did our delegation vote on this?
I don't know. This, this just got, you know, I, it passed. Um, I, I don't know. That's a great question.
I guess, I guess I can just find out really quickly. Uh, and, uh, pardon me, I should have said our delegation is what I should have said. Um, not singled anybody out. Um, so, because i- if I'm not mistaken, uh, I mean, this issue, like you just indicated, and this is just my memory as well, uh, kind of came out of nowhere into the legislature. No conversations, no communication with local elected officials on this. Is that right?
No, no.
Okay. And then, um, I believe this was discussed at the PIC, uh, meeting, uh, Public Issues Committee, Regional Committee, uh, and a lot of cities were just, um, um, quite upset about it, actually, if I'm not mistaken. So, um, so that was, so I just want to make sure that's the same. Um, I guess my, my next question would be is, um, so we have two, pretty much two options. Take no, uh, we can either do it ourselves, uh, vote on ourselves and we would get the funds. Or the other option, there's a few options. The other option is let King County, um, go with it, which we know what's going to happen, and they're going to get the funding, not the city fed away. Is that correct?
Well, I think actually, in order to be able to, yes, on, on the surface, you are correct, but we would have to implement this prior to the thirteenth. I just found out about this really, but this is happening just like last week. Um, and Ryan, would we be even, I'm not sure that you could impose this tax. I, I, um, I'm not sure you could declare an emergency for immediate, I'm not sure this would constitute an emergency for the health and safety of, of the public.
If you're asking if it's possible to pass it, um, I would need to look at the county and how long, if they have a referendum period or not. So if we pass it before them and it's both thirty-day referendum period, then ours would take effect before theirs. So that is a question I had, did not anticipate. So I'd have to look into that. I did want to point out too, just to Councilmember Moore's question about who voted how last year. The bill was substantially changed in March of this year. As originally passed, it required a vote of the people. So how they voted then is little different maybe than now, um, as passed this House bill is where they added this council manic option where the King County Council can just pass it. So that has changed a lot, um, uh, in the dynamic here.
Okay. Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I, I would complete concur with you that, um, that this, uh, I mean, I wouldn't be supporting this, um, even if it came, uh, I wouldn't support this at all. I think this is absolutely the wrong time for this to take place. Um, and I think it really does hurt a lot of people, especially now more than ever. So I, I do appreciate your leadership on this and your advocacy at the regional level. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now we've got, one second. Um, Councilmember Safa Dawson?
Yeah, um, and I think Martin did ask my question in a way. Um, but I do need clarity. No matter how we do this, the tax is going to be imposed. Is that my understanding?
Well, if they pass it. King County still has to pass it.
So we don't know what they're going to do though. Yeah, but we don't know what they're going to do.
We think we've been told. I've been just in candor to you and the public watching and the count, and the full council that, um, they have six votes.
Surprise. Sorry.
Mayor, it was, it was a committee of the whole. Does that mean the entire council already voted on this matter? So we've already had a vote.
Yeah.
So, in a way, then if the tax is going to happen, I do want to support the bill just because I want to have control over the money. What am I missing? Because I don't want to be wrong. But if it's bound to happen, especially if we know they're going to pass it, then why not get ahead of it? Um, it's a question for you, Mayor. I, I want to understand your thinking clearly.
I, I, so here's my, I, I philosophically strongly disagree with this. And, and so my rationale is if the King County wants to do it over our objection without consultation, okay, uh, they have that authority, but they're not going to get me to do so. I mean, I'm, I'm not going, you know, of course, it's you guys that would vote. Um, so it's not, it's not my vote, but my philosophy is I've, um, I, I'm not going to look somebody in the eye and say I passed taxing you because it was going to happen anyway. I just, I don't think philosophically, I just don't agree with that. But you guys could differ, and I think that's actually where reasonable minds can differ. That's why I wanted to make sure I got it in front of you.
No, I, and, and I do appreciate that honestly, and I do appreciate your, your input. Um, I just want to have control over what we do. Then I do have a follow-up question. I don't know if this is even crazy, thinking outside the box.
Yeah.
Let's say we pass it tonight, for example, or we can go back and rescind, can't we? Or is it, is it, once we vote, it's a permanent?
Well, regardless of what we do, King County will likely do it. And I guess if we rescind, um, you know, if we were to go back and, and say, never mind, um, I'm sure that at that point, their tax would then become, you know, effective. Um, it would also, I think if we, if we passed it, it would also create a, a one-hundred percent obligation. We don't know exactly where, what King County's plans are. They haven't told us what their plans are in regard, what they're doing. In fact, actually, the move here, because you can't have congregate shelter, um, because of COVID nineteen right now. So there's been quite a move about buying, building up, or excuse me, buying up motels or hotels. Now, that's been done in Kent. The reason why Kent is so, uh, and Kent and Renton are so adamantly in favor of this uh, about preemption is because of how they feel they've been mistreated. Um, and, and there's, they believe that there's been a lack of partnership, let's get, partnership with King County that this essentially occurred to them on store, instead of with them, um, with regard to these placement of these, uh, hotels, um, where King County has purchased and then put, um, uh, you know, homeless individuals in their hotels. That's why they, that want, they want to have some, some control. However, I am told that in order for King County to buy hotels or motels with this property, they would literally have to go back to the, they would have to go back to the legislature. And I just heard that in, in a conversation on SCA. So I don't know that to be true. That's what I heard on an SCA phone call, that they would have to go back to the legislature in order to buy up hotels with this money. But if we, if we impose this tax, then, then now we're in, now we are in the shelter building business. And, uh, you know, and then that, that really puts the onus on us. And once we've got this money, whether it's a million dollars a year or whatever, then, then we're going to be building homeless shelter here in federal way. So we don't, Mayor, we don't really know. Yeah.
Right. I, I, there's one also, uh, part of the, of the statute that I think we should probably know, and that is that if the county imposes this tax, they have to spend at least thirty percent of the money collected in the city in federal way. So because of the size of our city, they have to spend some of this tax money in our city if they impose it.
So thirty percent as opposed to one hundred percent. So it is, it's a philosophical issue. Susan, that's the number I gave you initially. I guess it's, I was taking sixty percent off that other, uh, PowerPoint. Um, so it's just about philosophically where you're at. Council, I, I need, I've answered the question, so I, I don't want to engage in debate. So I'm running the meeting, so I, I will provide information, but I won't opine anymore because I need to run the meeting. Um, Councilmember Moore, have you already, uh, have you already spoken to your point? Or did you want to talk?
Uh, Mayor, we need to extend the meeting. It's ten o'clock.
Yes, we do. Okay. Do you have, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move that we extend the meeting, our council meeting past ten o'clock. Um,
A second.
Thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second is ready discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I get a vote? Just kidding. Uh, no. Um, a little bit of levity. It's getting to ten, ten o'clock. Councilmember Moore?
No, I, I, please forgive me, uh, Mr. Mayor, I had forgotten to.
Where's my ruler?
I would like to request that we do lessons on this. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Coach Moore? Oh, can't hear you.
Oh, I think Ryan pretty much answered my question, which was, um, thirty percent. And, but I, I'm again trying to just understand thirty percent of what's the total amount that would coming from the federal way community?
I, I saw something about one point one million a year. Brian, does that sound familiar?
Yeah.
Uh, so it's a hundred and sixty thousand is what, uh, when I talk to a day, that's like, that's the number we came up with, was, was just the one tenth of one percent.
Yeah, that's really not going to get us very far. Um, so I'm really wondering, is there any caveat we can put in? I mean, when you say thirty percent has to be spent, you said in federal way, but does that mean that they have to take so many residents from federal way into this housing complex wherever they build it?
Um, the text says.
For example, if we do nothing and, and they impose a tax, how do we make sure that they, uh, because they could go build it anywhere else, but how do we make sure that they take our residents for thirty percent of the building capacity?
I'm not sure. So the text says they have to spend thirty percent of the money collected, um, in, for, uh, events within any city with a population greater than sixty thousand. So they have to spend the money in the city. I'm not sure if that means giving it away to somebody to use for a voucher or something to be used in another city. That, that's unclear. My reading of this is they probably need to build, like, this goes back to also the purpose of the thing. Sixty percent of all this money has to be used to build shelter. Um, it's capital stuff. So construct either, uh, housing or mental health related facilities or veteran, facilities to support veterans. So they're talking about construction. So I would read that as meaning they're going to build things in the city.
So, sure. So even when you, let's say we build something for hundred sixty, which wouldn't get us very far. You know, you still have to maintain and run it. And so, you know, it doesn't make sense.
And I'm not sure if that's a good number. I, I, I was seeing in order of magnitude larger numbers than that when I was reading about this. They're talking about sixty million dollars for the entire county, two million dollars for Kent. Um, I don't, I don't think that's an accurate number. I think we're closer to one point six million, not one, not hundred sixty thousand.
Right.
But again, that doesn't allow for running it. But that doesn't allow for running the facility just for capital, not for operations.
Well, if we, if we impose the tax ourselves, then we could spend up to thirty percent on operations.
I'm, I'm leaning toward just do nothing, but the members.
All right, thank you. Council President Honda?
Thank you. So, um, a hundred and sixty thousand a year or one point six million a year is a, is a big difference. But even at one point six million, that isn't enough money to construct much affordable housing, mental and behavioral health facilities, um, funding operations and maintenance of new affordable housing and facilities. Uh, it just, it's, it's really not enough money to do anything in our city. So I know, uh, Mayor, we talked about combining with the other, um, cities that are in skip last week. Did that, was there? Is that possible to do? Did you find out?
Well, we, we don't know. We don't, we don't know if, if you, if you pulled this money, if you passed this tax and preempted King County and got this money, we don't know about the locality, legality of dumping that money into skip for the, you know, I, we don't know.
It, so it, it's silent on that right now. There's always a very good chance that if a bunch of cities wanted to do that, the legislature might modify that. Um, and I also wanted to point out that you're right, one-year take for this tax would not be enough to build a shelter, but most cities that are going to use this money are going to have to bond and use this money as debt service, uh, to pay for a facility. They're not going to build it just out of pocket.
So, um, the county, it sounds like the county will pass this one way or another. Does that mean that they could build something in federal way without our asking them to or without our approval?
Well, it actually says, this is actually one of the things I was trying to explain to the group, well, that I was advocating, um, with the SCA group. The legislation requires, um, the, the authority imposing the tax to work with the city prior to placement in a, in, in a city. So they would be required to work with us. I don't think it's a matter of just, um, of course, you know, as you could, as you could see, you know, Kent and, and just be intellectually honest, Kent and Renton don't feel like um, that really happened with them. And they've, they've, they've got some grievances in regard to how that occurred, uh, with the hotels in their, in their cities.
Okay, so we don't, we really don't know how King County would act.
Well, you know, here's the thing. We've received no information from King County about this. They just, you know, as per usual, they just drop this, uh, you know, lead by press release, just like with the homelessness authority. Um, they just drop this on us like a bomb and expect, I, I have no idea.
Okay. So, you know, I'm, I don't want to impose a tax on anyone at this point, or actually at any point in my career, but, you know, it happens. Um, I'm really, this is really hard for to wrap your mind around because knowing that King County is going to impose this most, more than likely, our residents are going to be taxed. This is going to happen. And we will only get thirty percent of that money back from what our residents are being taxed at. But on the other hand, the amount of money that we could potentially get if we imposed it ourselves isn't enough to do very much. And as our attorney said, would actually potentially put us more in debt because we would have to find more money to build a shelter or to, I, you know, it's just, it's, it's really difficult, you know, the, um, I don't think we're paid enough to make these. You know, I, I would be leaned towards not doing anything at this point, not moving forward, because I don't think we have enough information to make a decision. I don't think, um, if we, even if we were to potentially get one point six million a year, it's not enough money to, to build a shelter. It's not enough money to run a shelter. We don't have money in our city to do that. So, um, it would put us in a bad position. And I, I, I could not do that to it. I, we're, we're going to have enough issues as it is with the budget and funding the things that we need to fund. So without adding something new to it, um.
Mayor, if I could jump in and just provide revised numbers. So I, I sat down with a day earlier to go over the, that number, the hundred sixty thousand we talked about. Um, he, um, dutifully heard this discussion and reran the numbers. And so the number that we're looking at is one point eight eight million, uh, is the amount that we're talking about.
That, that still would be difficult to do much with. Um, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. But with the, with what we're to spend the money on, it's not enough. It's a really, it, it puts us in a really weird position. Uh, King County, you know, they have forty, so Seattle would have to be in, in on this too. It, it wouldn't just be the suburban cities. It would be all the cities in King County. So King County has a potential to raise a lot of money this way, but a individual city doesn't. This is really not meant for an individual city, in my opinion. It's meant for the Meant for an individual city, in my opinion. It's meant for the county. And not for the city. The way I see it.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Uh, Council, is there anybody, uh, oh, actually, um, hold on. Councilmember Berusso?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, with, with all the unknowns here and, you know, the percentages and the amounts, we all talked about it. It's not going to be enough to do anything. And, and all the unknowns, uh, Mayor, I'm just going to. Move that we do nothing right now. Let, force that issue. So I just wanted to say that outright and, uh. See where I'm standing right now. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, um. All right. What I'm hearing is a general consensus of doing nothing. Is that, uh, is that my general understanding? Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, I just have a comment. And I think, uh, Council President Honda, I, I think what you just said is. Uh, really, really valuable. I think it's really important. Um, that what in terms of. This helps King County, doesn't necessarily help us, uh, in local cities. Uh, and I think there's just, there is a lot of wisdom in that statement and I hope people. Hear that. And I think too many times we, we've all said it and that's, uh, we feel like we're, we're left out and, and. Um, you know, Seattle and King County get, uh, the benefits and, and yet. Here we are in South King County, um, being affected by everything. Uh, so, uh, I, I think those are wise statement. Council President Honda, and I think it's, it, it was worthy for me to kind of. Call it out and say that I think that there's a lot of wisdom in that. So thank you for sharing that.
Okay, um, all right. So, um, I don't think we need a motion. Um, I think it was, uh, on here for. A discussion. And so I think that we have, uh. Thoroughly discussed this and, uh, well, we'll see what happens and we'll keep you updated. Most important thing, as I wanted to, as, as our, as my policy partners and a co-equal branch of, uh. City government, I wanted to alert you to this. Okay, um, moving on, um, item seven ordinances, first reading. This is Council Bill seven, one second. 787, um. Ordinance, minor amendment to Title 14, Title 18, and Title 19 of Federal Revised Code. Uh, first we'll have a staff report from Becky Chapin, our senior planner. And then we'll be seeking, uh, public comment. And, uh, then we'll, we'll move forward. Okay, uh, Becky?
Okay. Let me see if I can do this now.
Thank you waiting so, for waiting so patiently.
You know, it's my first city council meeting, so it's a great icebreaker, you know, to stay past 10.
Absolutely. Welcome.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Farrow, um, Council President Honda and Councilmember. I'm Senior Planner Becky Chapin, and I'll be presenting the minor code amendments for you this evening. So the policy question before you is, um, should the city council approve the proposed ordinance for minor amendments to the code, um, provide? That provide updates. To public notification and, um, state law. So some background with this. Proposal is, uh, staff have identified some several housekeeping items as minor amendments. They were brought before you as housekeeping items as part of the 2020 Plan, Planning Commission Work Program. That was approved in February 18th of 2020. The proposed amendments are to Title 14 Environmental Policy. Title 18 subdivisions and Title 19 Zoning and Development Code. Um, these minor amendments reduce conflicts, inconsistencies or emissions related to state law. Provide the necessary updates and co-clarifications that will allow a more streamlined review process and also changes will help. Provide new standards due to COVID-19. Um, so the first one is CIPA threshold determination timing. Uh, we want to remove the code that requires a CIPA threshold determination. Or decide the project will have significant impact within 90 days. Uh, for complex projects, 90 days is not enough time to conduct environmental review. And we typically have to ask, have to ask the applicant, um, to submit a formal, formal letter extending this time limit. Or else the city has to determine that the project will have significant impact and require an EIS. Um, in all cases, the applicant submits the letter to expand the time limit. And since this is not a. Requirement per state law, um, it should be removed to reduce the delays and unnecessary formal extension. The next one is to refine the definition of lot and tract. Um, it's not clear whether tracks should be counted as lots. We want to clarify that tracks are, which are not buildable or. Are intended for public dedication, um, environmental protection or stormwater facilities within a proposed development. Are not to be included in determining the number of lots created. This is a major issue for short plots, uh, so short plots are nine lots, not including those non-buildable areas. So, uh, a developer can have a short plot with nine building, building lots, um, and three tracks, one for open space. Stormwater and right of way, and it will still be considered a short plot. This is how staff interprets the code now, and we just want to clarify and codify it. The next one is adding notices, um, to owners adjacent to short plots. Staff will be providing mailing notices to properties within 300 feet of a subject property, similar to other land use review processes. Um, this will provide landowners adjacent to short plots the same courtesy as provided. For landowners adjacent to long plots, especially since short plots are extended to include projects with nine lots or, or less. This will have a significant impact to the neighborhood. Um, next one will be revising public notice posting locations. From removing the posting at the public libraries and city hall lobby. Um, state law doesn't require postings at these locations, and it's been problematic because of, um. The closures during, during the COVID-19. Um, staff have been having to ask applicants if they would want to proceed with posting, knowing the libraries and city hall are closed at this time. Um, city, city has currently required applicants to give notice to proceed with postings due to legal issues and chance of appeal. Because of those closures, um, before we can proceed with the postings. Um, we're still going to. Post at the newspaper, um, of the city and then site-specific projects will be posted on site. And staff would still post at the city hall lobby, um, as a standard practice once city hall is open to the public. Um, so this is an example we're going to, or this is, we're going to be adding a new requirement to post. Um, the city's website planning staff is currently working with IT to add a link to the front page of the website. Um, there are some, there was also some suggestions at the planning commission as a policy level. That we look at options such as, um. Like allowing the public to sign up for electronic mailing list. Or some other type of notice as well to get the message out. Um, so that is something staff is looking into. Um, the next one is to refine the definition of dwelling unit. Currently, special needs housing has its own separate definition, um, while senior citizen housing is under the definition of dwelling unit. Um, the use zone chart for this type of use only allows special needs housing as a staff dwelling unit, similar to what, um, senior citizen housing would. Allow. So we're just going to include the definition of special needs housing. Under the definition of dwelling unit, similar to the other use in this chart. Um, we're going to be removing the double notice requirement for administrative variances. Um, administrative variances are administered through a process three. And we want to keep it, um, the same as all other process threes to avoid any kind of confusion. Um, no issues are currently. And, um, come up for how we handle process three notifications right now. Citizens can still provide comments and, and appeal any decisions. Um, and for time-sensitive projects, this 15-day impending decision can delay the project. Um, and it's also really late in the process to ask for comments. Um, they have to have a significant impact for staff to change the decision. Which is really too late and could delay the project. And the final one is to update family daycare requirements to meet state standards. We're just going to correct inconsistencies in the federal revised code and state law. Um, the biggest issue was requiring a process three land use review for non-conforming structures. Um, structures that don't meet the zoning standards are exempt if legally non-conforming under the state law. And then there are some other minor, um, changes that to help reflect what state law says. Um, so the planning commission recommended approval of those, of the proposed amendments following a public hearing on September 2nd of 2020. Um, no pu- public comments were received. And then LETC reviewed the planning commission's recommendations and proposed adoption of the ordinance on Sep- September 14th of 2020. And the mayor's recommendation, um, is to adopt the ordinance of minor amendments as proposed. Um, that's the end of my presentation. I tried to keep it pretty quick, so if you have any questions, uh, please let me know.
All right, great job, Becky. Um, okay, I see a hand up by Councilmember Moore. Got you, man. Sorry, that was, was that my outside voice? Um, all right. I'll put, uh. Uh, Council, do you have any questions? Okay, all right. Thank you, Becky. Great job. Stay, stay handy just in case, uh, uh, an issue comes up. Um, we have public comment. Um. And, um. We're going to rename citizens in comment from this point forward, uh, and if we can't do it just by, um. Uh, just by decision, then I'll bring it back before you, but, uh, we'll call it public comment from this point forward. Uh, is there any public comment? Stephanie?
No, I don't have anyone signed up, Mayor.
Okay. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 787, Ordinance Minor Amendments to Title 14, Title 18, and Title 19 of Federal Revised Code. Ordinance of the City of Federway, Washington, relating to updating the zoning and development code. Amending Federal Revised Code 1410020, 1410040. 1805010, 1830080, 1835090A. 1905040, 1905150, 1905190. 1970060 and 19105070.
Okay, um, Councilmember Bruce, do you have a motion?
Uh, yes, Mayor, just real quick though, Becky, uh, she did a great presentation in LTC, even though this is also her first one. Great job. Thank you, Becky. Um, so I move forward, propose ordinance to October 20th, 2020 council meeting for a second reading and enactment. Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations, Becky. It's unanimous. Uh, we, we all thought you did a great job. Good job. All right, take care. Thanks for waiting so long. Okay, before we get to council reports, I don't know if you guys knew this or not, but it is our city attorney Ryan calls birthday. Everybody wish Ryan a happy, happy birthday.
Where is he?
Happy birthday, Ryan.
Happy birthday.
This is the part of the meeting where I stand up.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
We're not going to do the red robin thing on you, though.
Thank you.
How many times do you have to say it, Mr. Mayor?
What's that?
How many times should we say it?
Oh, exactly. I know. Well, anyway, I've been, um, uh, we've been, we've been planning this for quite some time. Anyway, thanks for all you do, Ryan. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Council reports. Okay, uh, let's start with Councilmember Asafad Austin.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone. I don't have anything to report on, so good night.
All right, very good. Uh, Councilmember Berusso?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, great meeting and staff too. So I'll make this, make this short. Remind everyone this is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And also, um, as a person who's lost my mother-in-law to breast cancer. Very important to me that everyone is aware of cancer, even if it's breast cancer or any cancer right now. So. Um, that's all I have to say, Mayor. I know this has been a long meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Councilmember Trent?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, but I don't have anything, uh, to report out today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Mayor. I actually have a very thick, um, report here, so. On page, no, um. Sorry, it is past 10 o'clock here. Uh, so. I was hoping to kind of get, find out how old Ryan was, but that's okay. That's okay. Uh, so happy birthday again. Uh, appreciate, uh, all that, uh, Ryan does, uh, for, uh, the city and, and for, um, us as well. So. Uh, again, I was just joking here. Um. Really proud of the work that we're doing as a council, um, from, um, with all the CARES Act, uh, funds. Um, I, I understand we're doing a second round. Now, which is, uh, good. And, uh, the childcare, I think is, was incredible. Uh, the fact that we're helping, um, and teaming up with, uh, Estella and, uh, Centro de la Raza. Um, and, uh, just so much, there's so many opportunities and, um. I wanted to kind of, um, do something a little bit different. Um, and I don't know if it's going to work, but, um. Uh, of course, it's not going to work. Um. Oh, boy. This thing. Um, let's see. So, well, so that's a picture. I can't, I don't know why it won't work, uh, but it's, um. I'm not going to even try anymore. But, uh. It's a picture of my father laughing. Um. And I, I usually, uh, I make it a rule, um, that I just stop by my parents' house most frequently. Um. Uh, close to every day almost. And, um, there, uh, we have an amazing caretaker. Uh, that takes care of, uh, my father and, uh, let me tell you, they are constantly, constantly laughing. Um, and what a joy it is for me just to sit on the couch and just kind of hear that. Uh, it, it's about, you know, when you, when you're fighting Parkinson's and other diseases. Um, and but yet you're in your, uh, early 80s, uh, you've worked hard. You've, you've worked hard. Um, and, uh, well, I, I wish I could show you the picture better, uh, but it's. It, it's just fun to, to see them laughing and, um, it's, it's awesome. And, and that kind of leads me to say. Uh, just want to take the time to, to really recognize our caretakers, um, all around Federway and South King County. Uh, for their compassionate type of work that they do. That they're all around us. Um, I'm, I'm so grateful for ours. Um, and, uh, they, you know, ours certainly brings a lot of joy to, to, uh, my father. And, and quite frankly, um, we're, we got very, very lucky. And so. Um, shout out to our caretakers. Uh, I appreciate the work they're doing. Um, and with that, I will end my report. Thank you.
We did see the picture, Martin. Thank you very much for sharing that. All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Coach Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say thank. You, uh, to Chair Berusso and the mayor. And our planning staff for looking at the regulations on cottage housing. I'm, I'm really pleased that we're going to. Get a mix of different housing types in our community. We really need that. And I hope that at some point we'll look at detached accessory dwelling units. Because we do have accessory dwelling units that are part of the, uh, dwelling unit itself. But the detach would be like the mother-in-law apartment, the small. Housing unit in the, either front or back of the facility. I, I saw one down in the, uh. Uh, Duane's area, Woodmont area, that was actually, um, really classy looking. So I, I, I hope that we look at that at some time in the future. Um, for individuals like our parents. Actually myself now, but our parents that are. Hey, I'm going for that 50-year, 20, 30-year, 20, 2050. I'm going to be here. Jim, I'm, I'm going to be there with you.
That's right. That's right.
I'm not going to tell you how old I'll be, but I'm planning on it, uh, for the.
80, I'll be 84. Benjen Moon will be 43.
Oh, my goodness. Be still my heart. So anyway, yeah, we just need to get a different mix of housing, uh, availability and our, our. You know, and some of it could be for, um, people who are without a house. I mean. Heck, with our rents going up the way they are, it's, uh, we have to look at, we have to think outside the box that we've been saying this evening. And look at different housing units. So. Uh, and then I'd like to thank, uh, some of our citizens, D W Purdon and Scott Chase for, um, reviewing our budgets. And giving us some really good advice on, on different, uh, items in our budget. And so I just want to say thank you for that. End of my report, Jim.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Council President Honda?
Um, thank you. It's been a long meeting. We've been here since five, so. Um, first of all, thank you, Thomas, for helping me with all my technical. We've been here since five, so, um, first of all, thank you, Thomas, for helping me with all my technical issues tonight. I appreciate it. Um, October is a lot of, it's a month that a lot of different things are celebrated or not necessarily celebrated, but awareness for, and one is domestic violence. And, um, with COVID and the recession and things going on, it's, we've had an increase in domestic violence in King County, which is unfortunate. Um, it's been a stressful few, few days for, um, a lot of people. And I would just like to say that, um, we hear the words be kind a lot right now. And, uh, instead of just saying the words, make an effort to really be kind and to reach out and help people who might need that help, um, especially our families and our students. And, um, we don't know what goes on behind closed doors behind, in their homes, but there is a lot of stress in our community and um, just reach out to people, especially your neighbors, uh, whatever you can do. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Very good comment. Thank you very much. Um, Susan. Okay. You guys proud to work with you. Uh, you did a great job. Uh, we're almost, uh, yeah, we're five hours and twenty-one minutes, uh, in for, since we've been meeting at five, but we got, uh, closing in on, uh, a four-hour meeting here. So great work, got a lot accomplished, really proud to work with you. Thank you so much. Be safe, everybody. Take care.
Thank you, mayor.
We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Night night.
Night night.